Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tacoma Park City Council meeting. I would ask the clerk to call the roll.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes, you can call the roll. Yeah, it's here.
Councilmember Kovar?
Here.
Councilmember Dibala?
Here.
Councilmember Kostic?
Here.
Councilmember Siemens?
You didn't hear him.
Councilmember Siemens is here. Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Circe? So, Councilmember Siemens, we've got you.
Yeah.
I couldn't hear.
We unmuted him. Carrie, can you speak to make sure we can hear you?
I'm speaking. Am I loud enough yet?
Great, all right. So, we have called to order the city council for this week. I'm going to actually share my screen right now to begin our meeting because I want to take a moment to remember Pat Lovelace, who we unfortunately lost, our community lost, a couple of weeks ago. Pat, as many people know, was a great champion of justice in our community. He was officially our official peace delegate here in Tacoma Park. And he lived his life with an unflinching advocacy for peace and justice and was a voice for many in our community who had no voice. He will certainly be missed by all of us in Tacoma Park. And I can say personally, as the mayor, I will very much miss Pat at our public meetings. When he would come, he would always do public comments and remind us of the bigger picture and what we were all fighting for and needing to do in our community. So, I just want to take a moment to remember Pat. And I thought of all the pictures that we had of him. This one was really just spoke of his essence and what he meant to our community. Thank you. And as we begin our meeting this evening, this is our second virtual meeting that we're having as a city council during this time of the public health crisis. I just want to again thank our city staff, my colleagues on the city council, and residents who have all been wonderful in helping us make this transition and this shift in how we work in the city. We know this is a time of great uncertainty and stress for all of us. And we want to stress strongly to everyone in our community that our city government, all of us, are still here for members of our community. We have a number of resources on the website. And in addition, we know that sometimes people, you know, may not have internet connection or feel comfortable getting on a website. So, there's a phone number people can call, 301-891-7100, and talk to a person in our city offices and get connected to resources and other programs that we have put in place in the community. We want to make sure that everyone knows in our city that right now you are not going through this alone. That we have a strong community and together we will weather this challenge and this crisis. In addition, the city manager has put together in great detail a number of the things that we're doing in our community. And I really just want to highlight for people right now that we are fortunate in the fact that over the last few years, programs and staff have been put in place so that we can react and support our community right away during this crisis. So, we have the Emergency Assistance Fund that has been up and running in the city for a number of years and can be augmented at this time to help residents. We have our Affordable Housing Reserve that has resources in it that we can look at as we go through our budget this year and go through the next few months to figure out how to really help members of our community. In addition, we are, we have some amazing staff right now who are working for members of our community. We are very lucky in the last few years that we have really augmented our housing and community development group. And we have people who are providing direct assistance to our tenants in the community and to our small businesses. And in addition, working with people in our community who have been laid off or find themselves unemployed at this time. And again, the city manager will go through all of those different programs that we're putting in place. And I just want to say thank you to many people. I want to say first, thank you to my colleagues on the city council who are juggling themselves, other jobs, families, their own lives, and the responsibilities of being on the city council. The information they're sending out, the resources they're providing to the community, and working together with all of us as we figure out a new way to serve the community. I just want to say thank you to all of you. I also want to recognize that we have been working in close collaboration with our county council and our county executive and members of his office. It has been so helpful to have the connection with our county government right now and to have their support. And I just want to thank them. And then finally, the folks I truly want to thank are our city staff right now. We've known in our community that we have amazing people who work for the city and who just put the needs of our community above everything else. And at this time, as we face this crisis, we see time and time again them doing that and working tirelessly for us. And in particular, I just want to thank our police officers and our Public Works Department and staff who are really on the front line and working to continue to make sure we have essential services in this community. So, with that, I just want to, I just wanted to say that. And we'll go more in depth on all of those things. But again, just wanted to thank everyone. In terms of upcoming meetings, as we noted tonight, we are, it's the first time we're going to do public comments virtually. You know, we're, we're working to really try and figure out the best way to do public meetings. I'm just pulling up the agenda here. As we move forward in the month of April, on Monday night, April 6th, we have our budget presentation and Q and A with the city manager. That will begin at 7:00 PM. So, we'll have the budget presentation by the city manager. And then after her presentation, we will have a virtual Q and A with the city manager on the proposed FY 2021 budget. Details of how the Q and A will, virtual Q and A will go about will be forthcoming on the city website. And this is an opportunity for members of the public to ask questions. We will not have a meeting on the evening of Wednesday, April 8th, as of Passover, so we will not meet. Our next meeting will be a budget work session on Monday, April 13th. That will begin at 7:30. And then we'll have a regular council meeting virtually on April 15th. That will begin at 7:30. That evening, we will have a public hearing that will be on the budget. Our voting session on April 15th will be a single reading ordinance authorizing a contract with R and R MM Luke Meyer Architects for professional services to continue design work for library renovation and a single reading ordinance authorizing purchase of a replacement 22-passenger van, a hybrid, for the recreation department. The materials for the April 15th meeting were put up on the city website on Friday. So, they are available for members of the public to view and provide comment on before our meeting and then during our meeting on April 15th. On Monday, April 20th, we will have another budget work session that will begin at 7:30. And we are tentatively scheduled to have a meeting on April 22nd. But again, as we are doing throughout this public health crisis, we are really assessing each day the meeting schedule and everything else. But you can always check on the city website for updated information. So, that is our upcoming meeting. Next for tonight, we have a proclamation for Arbor Day. I will read this for everyone. Whereas trees are an important part of the character of Tacoma Park and provide many benefits to residents, such as improving air quality, reducing stormwater runoff, lowering summer temperatures, reducing energy use in buildings, removing air pollution, absorbing emissions that contribute to climate change, enhancing property values, improving human health, providing wildlife habitat, and contributing to the beauty of our neighborhoods. And whereas cities play a vital role in promoting and encouraging the protection and planting of trees and other environmentally sound practices. And whereas due to COVID-19 health emergency, this year's Arbor Day celebration and tree giveaway have been canceled. And whereas although the community event will not take place, the city will be promoting the planting of trees through the Bulk Buy program in the spring and fall to encourage residents to plant trees and help maintain a healthy urban forest canopy. Now, therefore, I, Kate Stewart, Mayor of the City of Tacoma Park, Maryland, on behalf of the council, residents, and staff, do hereby proclaim support for the urban forest in Tacoma Park and encourage residents to plant trees and help preserve the tree canopy. And I do want to emphasize that we are continuing with the Bulk Buy program this spring. And you can find on the website the form to fill out to purchase trees. And you can do that by April 11th. So, that is still continuing. All right, I feel joined by Councilwoman Circe. Welcome, thank you for being here. All right, then our first item on the agenda now is a presentation from our Complete Safe Streets Committee, Recommendations for Traffic Calming and Sidewalk Request Processes. And I think we are turning this over to Jessica now.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
I'm actually joined by, okay, start my video. Joined by Emanuel Wagner, who's the co-chair, man, not co-chair, woman, as I inadvertently typed or autocorrect typed on my computer the other day, of the Complete Safe Streets Committee and who was one of the principal authors of our comments. I'm going to make a little presentation drawn largely from the recommendations that we sent you in summary the other day that I have not yet gotten feedback on from you. And I would just like to point out that, just generally before beginning, that this is our first, the first time that this newly reconstituted Complete Safe Streets Committee has interacted with the city council. And so, we would like feedback from you, not only on the contents of what we are presenting today and the way forward that you want us to follow, but also on generally how you see interactions with the city council and this, and this committee to be best for you. So, we look forward to hearing more from you about that. And also, obviously, we look forward to working with the city staff to help us figure out how to have our ongoing meetings using Zoom and the city's resources so that we can continue our work with you going forward and do that consistent with public meeting rules. So, I'll just begin by saying, giving you a little bit of background on how this Complete Safe Streets Committee, what ideas and visions of the role of Complete Safe Streets guided our comment writing for you, the things that we considered priorities. The first is that our vision is that our city has enhanced mobility in all ways, not just walking the streets, but a broader vision than just safe streets, but also enhanced mobility of all kinds for all different types of users of the community. We look to have the work that the city does, the decisions about what to invest in and how to prioritize to be evidence-driven and data-driven as opposed to, you know, squeaky wheel-driven, so to speak. And we also were motivated by support for focusing on the County Bike Master Plan and upcoming pedestrian master plan as components of what should motivate decision-makings in Tacoma Park because we think that those are the right alignment with our own vision. And finally, that equity and inclusion, racial equity and inclusion are very important going forward and that we were looking for guidance to the equity framework that was adopted by the Montgomery County DOT's Vision Zero Task Force, which calls for investing in areas that are historically underserved and projects that improve safety for people that are walking, biking, and using mobility assistive equipment, such as wheelchairs and canes, and prioritizing investments with that in mind. We think that's consistent with the city's own equity and inclusion assessment or impact analysis. So, those are the things that lay behind the recommendations that I'm going to talk with you about tonight. Any questions so far? The only people that I can see on my screen are Suzanne and Kate. So, I'm not sure why that is, but... And now I see, I see a random assortment of council members, but not everybody. So, you can have to unmute yourself and interrupt me if you want to ask a question because I won't be able to see you. So, first of all, we thought that the, having procedural, the request to us was to make recommendations about the traffic calming and sidewalk installation, regulations and ordinances that drive the city. And first of all, we didn't see any reason to have any ongoing procedural inconsistency between those two sets of ways of putting things on the agenda. You know, the number of, the percentage of residents that ought to sign a petition or things of that nature, there didn't seem to us to be a rationale for those being inconsistent. So, we would recommend that the two sets of requesting for action follow the same path going forward. Secondly, we thought that simplification of the process and making it easier for citizens to access requests to make changes for either traffic calming or sidewalks makes sense. And I wanted to share a little history with you. One of the members of our committee served on, served many years ago on the predecessor committee and indicated that the idea for having a petition with a fairly high number of people that had to sign the petition to trigger action had actually originated as a way, it might have even been Mark Elrich who thought this idea up, our member thought, as a way to ensure that action could be sped up as opposed to facilitate citizens getting speedier action. But it has turned into, in the view of some people, a slowing down of the way to precipitate action. So, we recommend that instead of having a requirement for a petition, there be more than one way that citizens can initiate action requesting, that the city consider taking steps to install a sidewalk or enhance traffic calming. So, if you decide to retain a petition process, we recommend that it be a much smaller percentage of people that you need to have to sign a petition before you can initiate action. But we also recommend that, that there ought to be other ways that you can initiate an investigation. One would be by contacting your city council member. Another would be by contacting the Department of Public Works. And that, the, but that just because you want it doesn't mean it ought to happen. So, we want to see you combine in the revised regulations a simplified process for initiating an investigation and also a data-driven and evidence-driven decision as to whether to move forward with implementing traffic calming or sidewalks. So, with respect to, let me just say that the current language also sort of basically says, tell us if you want a speed bump. But in effect, we really don't want for the decision about what type of traffic calming or mobility-enhancing measure is the right one so much as we want citizens to be able to come forward and say, you know, that we're concerned about this issue on our street. But then it would be not the citizens who decide that it should be a speed hump versus something else, but the, but an iterative process that basically works with what we know from the experts on our, on our staff at the city as to what is the most appropriate measure there in consultation with the citizens. So, the language in the revised regulation should be more open-ended in that regard. We also wanted to make it possible for the city, its staff, to initiate investigations of whether traffic calming or sidewalks are appropriate without needing to await a petition from the citizens. So, in, questions so far? So, that's with respect to requesting action and how the language of the regulations should be, should leave it open-ended as to what the appropriate action might be. The next issue I want to touch on is decision-making. We feel that it should be clear in the regulations what types of criteria are going to be taken into consideration in determining whether to move forward. And that is something that doesn't need to be a great deal of detail, but at least the criteria that are going to be considered should be evident, whether it's going to be, for example, evidence of accidents, a number of complaints, actual requests from the PTA or other school officials on the Safe Race Streets School Program. In other words, there ought to be, it ought to be possible for somebody to know what is likely to make their application succeed or fail, not only so that they can tell whether they really have a problem, but also so that they can make clear when they submit a request whether or not they can make the case for it. And you could consider, for example, using a point or rating system or a prioritization system that gives people signals as to what types of things will make the most difference. So, that way, you also will have a system for accepting or rejecting requests that will be data-driven and that will be not arbitrary and not based on who can ask the loudest. We wanted to ask you to prioritize equity and inclusion and wise expenditure when setting decisions about prioritization among requests. So, with that in mind, as I said, we support using the equity framework from Vision Zero from MOCO DOT because sometimes you're going to have to prioritize things not on the basis of, or we think you should prioritize them not on the basis of who got in line first, but on the basis of whether you can serve underserved areas of the city more readily and whether there are safety or mobility concerns that justify the order of priority. So, excuse me. There are a couple of other recommendations I want to make from our overall recommendations flag for you that I found, because I was lucky enough to be able to sit in on one of the conversations that the mayor and Cindy Dibala had with citizens, residents, and Cindy's ward that made it clear that these are things that the staff is already doing. So, it's interesting to notice that, that our recommendations seem to align with, with some of those things. And that is that you, where possible, consider holistically recommendations that are made, that the relations will make clear that where feasible, you would consider holistically how the changes in one, on one street would affect neighboring streets and give them an opportunity to weigh in. The way the regulations are currently worded right now, you have to sort of have a petition that looks just at the four corners of your, of your street and is not particularly holistic in how it considers the surrounding community. We understand that that could sometimes lead to making it harder to make decisions since a speed hump on one street might send traffic to the neighboring street. But in fairness, it's probably better for everybody. It may result in a stalemate and not putting in traffic calming somewhere, but it's, it's more community-oriented to take that approach. And secondly, we wanted to urge you to be innovative and cost-conscious in making your decisions about which traffic calming or sidewalk priorities to prioritize, where it's possible to do many small things rather than one costly thing that that might be an appropriate prioritization strategy. So, we, that is my summary of our recommendations. We provided this to you in written form. And I just wanted to flag that we were, we asked of the council via Jamie Ernst, who's been a very, very helpful liaison for us. We asked whether you wanted advice from the committee as to the actual drafting or redrafting of a consolidated rule. We were told, no, give us your general advice in a more summary form, which we've done, but we all stand at the ready. But we all stand at the ready. And Emmanuel, who I want to give him an opportunity to fill any gaps I left here. Emmanuel was one of the people who was most involved in drafting these recommendations. He and I and other members of the committee would welcome the opportunity to work with you on any drafting that you decide you want to do to revise existing ordinances. Thank you. Happy to take any questions. And Emmanuel, also happy to take any detailed questions since you worked on it.
Great. Thank you so much for that report and to your full committee for your work on this. Councilmember Smith, did you have a question? I saw your, I saw your hand up before.
Hi. Thank you so much for putting together this report. You mentioned you want the decisions to be data-driven. Can you elaborate on where we would get the data and where we would house it so that residents that are impacted by these potential decisions can simply, you know, review it and, you know, possibly make some hypotheses on, you know, other changes to these traffic calming measures that might be even better than, like the alternative hypotheses?
Sure. So first of all, data-driven in that the city and the county both have data about what intersections in Tacoma Park have had the most accidents and injuries. And incidentally, the Tacoma Park Police accident data and the county accident data, from what we were able to understand, are not currently consolidated into one database. And one of our other recommendations is that we try and make sure that the city of Tacoma Park data are indeed combined with the county data. So that is one key driver. And for example, there are some areas in the city, just to give you an example, where accidents and injuries are known to occur that are very close to the schools and where there are no sidewalks. To us, that seems like an obvious area to revisit, and that's an example of data-driven. The other would be looking to the data that the county has in great detail about where are the areas within Tacoma Park that are, that are the ones that have been historically underserved or where racial equity issues would be a consideration. So we want to look to existing databases that the county and the city already have to help answer those questions. And if somebody, if there's a street, you know, this, I'll give you a final example. The meeting that Kate and Cindy Dibala had with the folks on, I think it was on Lincoln Avenue, I'm not sure.
Correct.
Where they looked at, they actually had this police department put out counters that measured quantity of traffic and speed of traffic. And they were able to evaluate how many, you know, traffic, you know, what the actual average speed was. So that, you know, the decision there as to whether to move forward with traffic calming, if the data do not support a decision to prioritize that street, that would be another example. Or if they do, either way, that would be an example of a data-driven decision. So just because people are worried about it, if the data suggests that this is not a priority from a safety standpoint, that you would, you would evaluate it that way. Did that answer your question?
Thank you. Councilmember Kova.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay? Thanks for the presentation. It's great to get your first official interaction with us, and we appreciate that. Two questions I had. One, you mentioned the idea of having the petitions not need to have as many people. And I suppose under the way you've described it, the potential is that you might not necessarily have a majority of the people in a given area asking for something. And I think it tends to be more probably sidewalks than other traffic calming that become more controversial, maybe because sidewalks are considered more of a convenience as opposed to a safety thing, even though they really are about safety. But would you have any concerns that if something comes forward and ends up being done in terms of either of the two, there might not even be a majority in terms of signing the petition that that could add to the controversy?
Well, Peter, actually, I think we were trying to divorce the petition to have a sidewalk considered from the decision of the, on the part of the city as to whether to move forward. So I think that what we were saying is that when a number of neighbors want to have the city consider taking one of these actions, it should require a smaller number to trigger the evaluation than 50%. But that does not in any way eliminate the need for a full panoply of public outreach and consultation before a decision is made. And we actually think that that process should be one that is, that it's very important that it be more readily accessible, including accessible online. And for example, right now, the regulations call for notifying people by mail about meetings and holding the meeting in the community. We need to look to more modernized mechanisms for making sure that everyone can weigh in that could allow for online weighing in and that could allow for maybe a Zoom meeting or something like that. So it's not a question of whether you would move forward with less acceptance, but you would be able to trigger the evaluation with fewer signatories.
So it's really just about getting that process started.
That's right. Yeah. And we don't, we don't think that decision to put in a sidewalk should be driven by getting all your neighbors to sign a paper because the whole point is that you're supposed to prioritize safety and mobility and not who gets to scream the law.
Gotcha, gotcha. One other question, you mentioned this, and just maybe you can say a couple more things about it, this question of the intersections that are dangerous. So in some cases, you know, some of those intersections, in any case, already have sidewalks, and they may be too big or may involve state roads, and so you can't do things like speed bumps or other sort of more traditional traffic calming measures. But, and not to pile work on a newly reinvigorated committee, but is the sort of dangerous intersection concept or group one of the things that the committee is also going to be looking at separate from this sidewalk traffic calming question, even though it's not entirely separate from?
Well, thank you for asking that question.
A long question with multiple subordinate clauses, yeah.
Well, that gives me the opportunity for complex sentence structure in my response. So Peter, we actually, one of the key things we wanted to have feedback from the council about is how we set our priorities as to what we should be working on next after this, which was the only specific request that was made to this committee is where to begin when they reconstituted themselves. We, in answer to your question, the next thing that we had teed up, the next two things that we had teed up, I should say. The first is that we wanted to interact with the Safe Routes to School representation in the city government because we want to see how the city is doing in addressing the sidewalk issues that had been identified the last time, that that group, which is sort of where we want to go, where we look at issues for access to the schools on foot, see how the city is doing in filling those gaps because we do think that Safe Routes to School is a very high priority. And the second area that we had teed up and the process of working with members of the council is something that some of my committee folks have said they wanted to prioritize, is to talk about the purple line and making sure that as the purple line goes forward, that we are thinking about these mobility issues and whether, we don't yet know because we haven't had a chance to interact with the council on this yet, but we were hoping that maybe you would, you would flag for us whether you think engagement from this committee could help to focus attention, not just by the city, but other parts, relevant government entities on, you know, pedestrian mobility and access issues for underserved populations going forward. So those are the two we want to ask you about and see if there are others that you think we should be prioritizing instead.
Okay.
Or if those are the right priorities.
Thank you.
I think I, Councilman Dibala, and then Councilman Kostick.
Yeah. Hi, thank you. The committee is off to a great start. This is fabulous, and I really look forward to interacting with you some more on some other issues. My experience, as you suggested, Jessica, to both with sidewalks and with traffic, is that the current system isn't working too well for most people and that many of the reforms you're suggesting make a great deal of sense. The question I have has to do with saying a little bit more about how you got to the idea of multiple avenues to request a look at a particular street for traffic calming or for sidewalks rather than simply reforming the petition system that we have now.
Well, I'll respond, but then I also want to make sure and give Emmanuel a chance to speak because he participated in some of those ad hoc working group discussions. I think that one of our drivers was that we are trying to make access to city services and actions as citizen, as resident-friendly as possible and that some of the people for whom these issues are probably most relevant are the ones for whom a petition gathering, signature gathering process and the like would be most onerous. So we look, for example, at the high-rises that have lots of people who have kids walking to school, but probably nobody who has time to write a petition or would necessarily feel comfortable going around collecting signatures. So our idea was that by opening numerous doors, but then having a rigorous process to assess requests, we would enable more people to put issues before the city council or the city government that need to be considered without then just meaning that everybody who makes a petition or makes a request is going to get what they want, but at least that everybody could get what they wanted to have considered, considered.
Yeah, Jessica, this is Emmanuel. I think you summarized that exactly right. We try to really lessen the burden and allow for residents to pursue several avenues that either would work for their very specific situation or, you know, have somebody advocate for them through the city, which you really should know, you know, best on some of these processes or the council members who represent them. So, you know, trying to open, as you said, trying to open multiple doors that citizens, residents can use to, you know, fix whatever they feel is wrong on their street was really the driving force behind those recommendations. Everything else, Jessica, you said is spot-on, so.
Also, Cindy, just one other element about that is that for some people, their window into the city will be their city council member, and for others, it's going to be somebody like Grace, for example, who has a lot of connections in the community that maybe the city council members don't have. So we again wanted to have it be via the legislative branch or the executive branch, so to speak, that people would be able to have something come before the decision-makers.
Yeah, thank you. That makes sense to me, and I'm also particularly interested in what criteria might look like if we put them out ahead of time so folks know how a decision is being framed. We don't have to talk about that right now, but that's, that's something I'm interested in. Thank you.
Great. Councilman Kostick.
Thank you very much. I'm really glad that we're having this discussion about our traffic calming and sidewalk request policies because this is something we've been talking about making changes to for a while, and your, your report really helps move us forward on that. So I first of all want to say thank you to the committee for putting in the time and really taking, particularly taking a focus on this that prioritizes equity. And I also want to note that Ms. Landman and myself were both on the Montgomery County Equity Task Force for Vision Zero, and I think, I see a lot of the discussions that we had in those meetings reflected here as well, and I think that's really, really helpful. I have a couple of questions, and I think that in general, we need to think, as you said, about looking at this process more holistically and considering how, how there can be multiple avenues to engaging for people who have an issue on their street and they want to request a sidewalk or they want to request traffic calming. I'm also curious if you have thoughts about how staff can more proactively identify locations where there might be an existing issue so that we have kind of, we're kind of coming at it from both directions. We have residents identifying these things themselves, and then also a more systematic approach where it might be possible to look at a location and say, this is within a walk shed of a school or a transit center, and this is a particularly important location where we need a sidewalk, for instance, or this is an area where we have a lot of cut-through traffic, and we can identify that through looking at sort of the way that the roads are configured, or a more systematic approach from that perspective. Do you think that's, from the work that you've done, something that could be done? And if so, how might that be done most effectively?
Well, we did talk directly, we made a point of inviting the Montgomery, the Tacoma Park Police Department and Montgomery County Police to come and talk with us about the accident and injury data that are available. And, you know, that is a starting point, obviously. Now, the thing is that they only collect data, at least at a county level, when something more than a fender bender occurs, when there is a reason, when the police are called or where there's, where there's an injury. Where the city of Tacoma Park Police may actually, in a very sort of back-of-the-envelope, rule-of-thumbs kind of way, be able to tell you exactly where those problem intersections are. And we found that, you know, there was absolutely no question in the minds of either the county or the Tacoma Park Police Department's mind about what the troubled intersections were where priority should be given to safety. I think a big challenge for Tacoma Park, though, in some of those places is that they're state roads. So some of the things that come out of this are for, are kind of fall into two buckets. The bucket, things that Tacoma Park can fix on its own and things that Tacoma Park needs to prioritize working with county and state officials to fix. And sometimes Safe Routes, or resources spent on advocacy might be much more valuable than resources spent on drawing, you know, white lines on the road yourself where the intersections are ones where Tacoma Park can't control its own destiny very well. So this committee also wants to let its council know that we are, we see it as part of the role that we could play to work with you on advocating at the county or state level for safety and mobility issues if need be, because, you know, especially the purple line, for example, whenever there's an opportunity to reconfigure the roads, that's another key moment that's ripe for action, you know? So those are the two places I would look to.
Great, thank you very much. Yeah, I think that's a really important point with regard to the locations where we just don't have control, and those tend to be some of the faster-moving streets and the busier intersections. So I think that is definitely an area where we need to continue to push at the state level for improvements to be made. With regard to data, I also wanted to ask, you noted the data that is being collected, particularly for sidewalk requests and traffic calming requests when the police department is putting down the counter on the streets. In my experience, it's been really difficult to compare whatever data is collected in those individual, on those individual streets to a more holistic level of data. So you see the volume of the cars and you see the speed of the cars, but it's hard to really contextualize that and have a sense of whether or not that compares in a negative or positive way to some other street or what, perhaps what it should be on that particular street. And so in my experience, I've had people increasingly, who actually even have traffic calming on their streets, coming to me and saying they want to put in traffic calming requests because they still are getting a large amount of volume or they're still getting a large amount of speeding cars. So one of the things I'd like to think through a little bit is how we can make sure that the data that we are collecting is put into a common database so that we're considering these things in a way that gives us some sort of comparison when we do get the requests, and also how we can measure how effective our traffic calming is. So if, for example, someone puts in a traffic calming request and there isn't traffic calming beforehand and we get that data, then can we get additional data afterwards to see how effective that has been?
That actually makes a lot of sense to include something like that, an evaluative procedure and iterative procedure in the regulation. I think that that makes, it's very logical, at least at the outset. But I also think that this is another issue for advocacy. We confirmed, and Emmanuel just confirmed this, I was talking with him about it earlier today, but it came up in Cindy's constituents' meeting, that the city cannot reduce the speed limit, I'm told, from 25 down to 20 right now, but that that is something that legislature is considering making. But that that is something that legislature is considering making feasible. And that, to me, would be a priority because even with, as you said, even with traffic calming measures, the speed limit is what it is. And if we can't make it lower on those small residential streets without an intervention from the state, then maybe that's the way we need to go. And I think Tacoma Park would be a perfect community to lead a drive for something like that, especially given the Vision Zero bad results that the state of Maryland has been attaining lately. It ought to be a ripe moment in the next legislative session.
And I'll just add that we have a Tacoma Park resident who is actually leading the charge on that. Our delegate, David Moon, has been the one who's introduced that legislation the last couple of sessions. So this is a very much Tacoma Park thing.
We get a couple, the kids from the youth council, there's nothing like having young people testify at a state legislative hearing to get results. So I think that it should be a priority. This is something that on Lincoln, the results showed that people were staying within the speed limit. But as you know, you can't give a ticket unless somebody exceeds a speed limit by quite a bit.
Yeah, thank you. And then one final note, again, this is similar to what Councilmember Dibala asked, and I don't need you to lay out an answer right now, but I'd be curious to hear what your thoughts are. And as we continue to work on this, with regard to the decision making process and how different aspects should be weighted. So you gave a great list of things that might be included in a point or rating system, like volume of cars, speeds, the number of accidents, proximity of schools. And I know one of the biggest challenges is sort of weighting those different things and deciding which one might be most, might be ranked higher or if they're all sort of given the same amount of weight, but they're kind of added up and how that might be tallied for the purpose of making decisions and prioritizing requests. So as we move forward with reconsidering the ordinance, I'd love for you all to work with us and to work with staff to consider what makes the most sense in terms of those particular elements. And then finally, just another plug in to say, I think we need our traffic calming policy and we need our sidewalk request policy, but the more that we can get people out of their cars and we can bolster alternative options again and again, that is really where we're going to, I think, see the best improvement in terms of safety and reduction of traffic overall. So thank you all very much.
Great. Thank you, Councilwoman Kostic. Councilwoman Circe? No, wait, you're, Councilwoman Circe, just wait one second. Now you should go.
Now I can go. Okay, awesome.
You go.
Hello. Thank you all so much. I think your recommendations are extremely sound and make a lot of sense. And thank you all so much for all of your hard work. I know how challenging examining traffic processes can be. A couple of points. So and it's, to some degree, piggybacking off of comments that have already been raised by my colleagues. We've talked about leveraging data that we potentially could have access to through either the county or through our own police department. To what extent did the committee talk about the possibility of prioritizing traffic studies? One of the things that we're experiencing as a result of the Purple Line is traffic calming, speed bumps, bump outs, just slow people down. You need substantial traffic studies in order to make a substantial impact on traffic volume and perhaps redirect cars or to know how to redirect cars. So you're not moving folks from one street to another. You're kind of coming up with a more comprehensive plan. Did you all talk about that as a priority for the council to consider? Like whether or not, I know that being cost conscious was a priority, but whether or not we want to be forward thinking in terms of kind of staging in traffic studies, particularly around areas that are business districts. So I'm thinking Old Town, I'm thinking the crossroads, I'm thinking Flower and Maple. I'm thinking also about those transit centers and whether or not we need to focus on having traffic studies and redirecting people in a more holistic way, in a more substantial way in those areas. Did you all kind of talk about that at all as a possibility?
Well, you know, Councilmember Circe, one challenge that presents itself, an answer to your question, is that we were looking at traffic calming and sidewalk installation issues. You know, traffic calming is not something that, the types of things that the City of Tacoma Park can do with traffic calming are on the streets that it controls. It can't put speed bumps on 410, much as some of us might like to, or on University Boulevard. So I don't think it was really, the types of traffic studies that I think you're alluding to, which are the kind that would involve, for example, the State Highway Administration or Montgomery County Department of Transportation, we did not get into that because we didn't think that these measures were ones that were going to be applicable on those roads. So maybe, maybe the answer is no, but maybe I should just make sure that Emmanuel, that they didn't talk about this in the subcommittee while I wasn't there.
No, I think you're right. The areas that would require traffic studies that tend to be, yeah, more dangerous and whatnot, certainly seem to be out of the jurisdiction of the city. So I want to say we've looked at it and once we understood where those areas are and that we don't have jurisdiction over it, it quickly became a sort of a non-topic. The other part of it is that our understanding is that traffic studies also are quite expensive. And the question there then becomes, is that then the best use of funds? We didn't necessarily get into that, but that is certainly one of the considerations, too.
One thing I would say in that regard, at least what we're experiencing in Ward 6 is a result of, it could be temporary Purple Line construction, but it could also be permanent. So if you have people who are avoiding University Boulevard and they're avoiding New Hampshire Avenue by cutting through residential neighborhoods that have a lot of entrances and exits. So where we are is we're at a place where we've appealed to the state, we've appealed to the county. And what they've told us is, hey, we control University Boulevard, we control New Hampshire Avenue, and we're looking at those areas. But if you all need to redirect traffic through your community as a result of a substantial change along University Boulevard, which might substantially change traffic patterns for your area, you're kind of on your own. So for Ward 6, City of Tacoma Park streets, we could potentially find ourselves, if we don't think about a traffic study more holistically, thinking about how can we put in the right types of traffic calming, which might include closing streets, making things one way, redirecting people, then we're going to keep having streets like Wildwood Drive, Ellison, just be cut throughs for University Boulevard. So when I'm talking about traffic studies, it's more about kind of thinking, to Councilmember Kostic's point, about more holistic changes that might need to happen to city-owned streets as a result of things that might happen on state-owned streets. So University Boulevard will actually lose two lanes once the Purple Line is in place.
That's a really good point. We did not, we did not look at that. And you know, that would, this goes to something else that Councilmember Kostic said, which is, or maybe, I actually don't recall if it was her or maybe it was Cindy Dibala. Who should be able to initiate a traffic calming decision? This would be a perfect example of when it ought to potentially be initiated by city staff professionals who are able to predict that this is going to be a problem and would not wait, would not be wanting to wait for a petition from citizens, but would instead proactively take steps to, for example, look at some of the measures you're talking about, like one way or narrowing the lanes or putting in markings or something like that or temporary measures. Because by the time citizens figure out that they have a problem or residents figure out they have a problem, it's already two years down the pike of misery because of the type of thing you're talking about. So I think it's a really good point. And we did not, at least in the full committee, we did not think about that. But I'm glad, this does sort of give me a chance to ask you, do you think that this committee should be looking at Purple Line impacts? And I kind of think you're saying yes with that question.
We, I know before COVID-19, we were trying to work and I was working with a member of the committee to try to figure out how we can get the committee to to kind of see, and University Boulevard to kind of see some of the chaos and to kind of see some of the traffic challenges that are happening just from construction alone. But I definitely think that's going to be important. I also think it might be important for the committee to think about our business districts and keeping, again, thinking about things from the perspective of how do we get people out of their cars? How do we create an environment where people feel safe and want to walk and want to patron, right? And those are areas where we would have control, right? It wouldn't just be the state highway. It could be figuring out ways to make sure that we're configuring some of our alleyways and city-owned streets and working with property owners to come up with alternatives to kind of deal with things like parking lots, right? So in my ward, we have these huge parking lots that become just hazardous for people that are patroning the businesses or walking to and from the different businesses. So trying to think of other approaches to kind of dealing with some traffic impacts that I agree wholeheartedly should be squarely within the authority that the city has. But I was wondering if there may be some other opportunities that we may want to consider.
Well, we do look forward to working with you on following up on the Purple Line walkthrough. We know that we missed an opportunity, that a walkthrough was done shortly before this committee had a chance to kind of connect with you. And I'm sorry we missed that opportunity because it might mean going over some of the same territory. But if you think engagement, if the council wants this committee to tackle that issue, we would welcome the opportunity to work with you on it going forward.
Right, yes. I would love to work with you all. And I'd also think that, again, it will create an opportunity for us to start, again, thinking about things like getting people out of their cars, transit oriented, kind of making it, making people feel comfortable to take public transit because it's an easy walk, it's a pleasant walk, and they're not as inclined to get in their cars or thinking through some of the business concerns. Because it creates a really nice nexus, right, where the Purple Line is, that kind of where all of those different issues collide. So definitely look forward to working with you all. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. I'll just add my thanks, Ms. Lammon, for this report. And Mr. Wagner, we're glad that we're moving forward with this. I just want to echo some of the things my colleagues have said. And I think there's general agreement that having the committee provide us with more feedback on the criteria for the decision-making process and why to go into that. And I'd like to also hear from our city staff on that as well because I do think that will be important to be very clear to the public and transparent that as they are requesting traffic calming or for us to start a process, that as that moves forward, people are understanding how and what criteria are being used to judge whether a project moves forward or not. So I think that, I think we would all like more information on that. And I agree with Councilwoman Circe. The, I feel like the more advocates and minds we have on the traffic issues around the Purple Line, the better we will be. There is a lot to, I guess, I would say, catch up on in that area. So it may be good if, maybe there's a, it sounds like you were working with subcommittees on this committee to look at that. There was a great deal of information shared back and forth when Delegate Charcutian organized the, the walk-along with State Highway and a lot of follow-up, or I should say, a lot of back and forth. Not necessarily follow-up. A lot of back and forth has happened. And so it would be good to be able to dig in on that and help really push that forward. I feel like that is one of those issues, having honestly a constant drumbeat and the help of advocates to help us move that forward is going to be key. So I know I would, and that Councilwoman Circe would welcome your help on that. I guess the other area, and since Councilwoman Kostic and yourself served on the MOCO Committee looking at Vision First, I'd be really interested in really digging into applying the racial equity framework that Montgomery County is using to our own work here in the city. As you know, my city is much smaller than Montgomery County. Given staffing issues and capacity, I'd be interested to see how we take the model and what the county is using and actually applying it here. So I'd actually like to see the committee come back with specific recommendations on how to take what the county is doing and really fit it for our community and how we would do that.
They do have that data on a very granular level as to income, for example, and who's a rent, where houses, residential occupancy is renters versus homeowners and that kind of thing. So and I think that the City of Tacoma Park mirrors the counties' divide in that regard in some ways. So they actually have mapped out what the corridors are that are deserving of special attention, where there is this clear overlap between low income and people of color and accidents and injuries. And there is a very strong overlap there that is applicable within Tacoma Park as well as the county at large. So I think we have a lot to work with there with the county database already. And that would be something that would make a lot of sense in terms of the recommendation. Can I just, on that point, add one other thing? Which is that I know that this is something you discussed during your staff retreat or the council retreat. And it's something that's on our minds as well, that we want the committees to be representative of Tacoma Park in terms of their geographic distribution and their racial diversity as well. And despite the best efforts of the committee members themselves, we don't put people onto the committee, you do that. And our committee has, I think, a dozen people on it now. But we very much do not have an even distribution of representation across the city wards. And we want the council to send us more volunteers or help us to identify people from the underrepresented and underserved wards of the city to serve with us. And that would strengthen our advocacy ability also. So hopefully you'll come back with additional nominations and plump up our members.
Great. Well, thank you. As I think as a number of people know, the city council last year set as a priority to look at our committee structure. And part of that is the recruiting of members. And there has been a group, Councilwoman Dibala and myself and members of the city staff have been working on that. Unfortunately, we were pretty close to bringing recommendations back to the full city council. But the COVID-19 crisis will probably delay that a bit. So do I have any other questions for Ms. Lammon or Mr. Wagner at this time? All right. Do you have any other final questions for us?
Yes, I do, actually. So one quick question, you mentioned the walkthrough at the Purple Line and the business district. Since we're not going to be able to do that for quite a while, if there's some sort of a summary that may be relevant to our committee, if that could be shared, that would be quite helpful just so that we don't wait until, you know, God knows when.
Yeah, I think that'd be good. I think once we get, we're working with our city attorney and our city clerk to put in place guidelines to make sure we're meeting open meetings requirements for how our committees meet. And so once we have that up and running, hopefully in the next couple of weeks, it may be best, perhaps, if we hold a meeting with your committee and Councilwoman Circe, myself, and members of the staff come and kind of walk you through what that, the walkthrough we had with members of the Purple Line, S H A, and Montgomery County Department of Transportation. There's a lot of paper that went back and forth. And it's actually, I find it a bit confusing, quite frankly, of all the different parties. And I think it might be helpful if we first had a meeting so we could help walk through that. I think Councilwoman Circe knows all the players really well, though some of them keep moving around. So it might be beneficial to do it that way. Councilwoman Circe, I don't know if you have other opinions on that.
Sorry, could you start over? You were muted there.
All right. I keep forgetting when I hit, when I unmute myself here, I am not unmuted. Yeah, I think that'll be a great first step. And at least we'll make sure that we can kind of kind of share information. We can also share some information with you all so you kind of have a better understanding for what the end, end game will be for, for University Boulevard along that stretch. That also kind of helps to put things into perspective. So when you kind of realize you have a train running through the middle of university, you're losing a lane, you're going to have bike lanes on different sides, it'll, it'll make it a little easier in terms of kind of ultimately envisioning how traffic patterns and gaps might exist based on what they're planning to do.
My last question for you, since you gave me an opportunity to ask it, is how you want us to move forward in the COVID-19 world. We are going to, you know, we're supposed to meet the, I think, next Thursday. We meet on the second Thursday, if I'm not mistaken. Emmanuel, correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, so as I just mentioned, we're working with our city attorney and the city clerk to make sure we put in place appropriate guidelines so that we're meeting the open meetings requirement. And we're hoping to have that in place soon so that groups, committees can meet. So I know there are a number of committees.
Until then, we should.
You are not allowed, no, because we have to make sure we are following all the open meetings rules. So until, until we have in place the, the specific guidelines and get that up and running, yeah.
Okay, we're on, we're on unpaid leave in that case. And also, just, I mean, this, at the risk of stating the obvious, we were, we're also going to need technology, IT assistance to do this in order to, I mean, obviously, we could probably make up our own Zoom system, but we want to, we want to work with the IT people. So if you can just let me and Emmanuel know how to do that, well, when the time comes, we'll.
Yes, absolutely, Ms. Lammon. You're exactly correct. And that is one of the reasons why we wanted to make sure we were able to first get the city council meetings up and running, and our IT staff and our city television were able to do that. And then once we kind of got this down, then we'll, we're moving on to our committees.
Now, I'm going to show you something before I get off the line so that you can see. This is a, can you see my new virtual background?
Oh, really nice.
I learned how to do this for Zoom meetings. So in case you don't want people to see the condition of your own household, you can, you can choose your own virtual background. So enjoy the cherry blossoms.
Great, well, thank you very much. All right.
No extra charge for that. Okay, thank you.
Great. Now we'll move on to public comments on our voting items. And, you know, since we have, I think, everybody online who have signed up for general public comments, what we thought we would do tonight is actually just do all the public comments and then move to our voting session, since we don't have a work session this evening. And again, this is the first time we're doing this. So we wanted to, to see how this works, but given that everyone was so punctual today, this evening, and got online right at the beginning of our meeting, if folks need to get off, I want to be respectful of their time. So first, we will take public comments on voting items. Our first voting item is a second reading ordinance amending our Title V of our election code. And I am not seeing any public comment on that. So we will move to public comments on our resolution approving change to the FY '20 Community Grants Program to fund operational support for grantees. And I have Mr. Tababu Assefa, is he still with us? He may have gotten off. Okay, he had to leave. So we will now move on. Those were all the public comments on voting items. Next, do we, so we'll go to general public comments. Do we still have Ms. Zoe Stern with us? We'll have Ms. Stern start.
Hi.
There's Ms. Stern, all right. So you are our very first resident to do virtual public comments.
Very excited. How are you all doing this evening?
Good. So just so that we follow all the rules that we've had before, we'll ask you just to state your name, and I will actually keep the time on three minutes for public comments. So Ms. Stern?
Okay. I'm Zoe Stern. I represent Ursula Properties, and I'm here tonight to share with you how hard-hit our businesses in this crisis are. Of the 20 businesses we lease to you, about 10 are fully closed, two have permanently closed, and the rest are running reduced operations. We are working hard to support our small businesses to help relieve some of the burden. We have offered our tenants half rents for the next two months with payment plans. We are prepared to work with them going forward. We have weathered other lows in our commercial district, and we expect to do so again. We ask for your consideration of small businesses as you work on your 2021 budget and during interactions with county and state officials. Our businesses are going to need additional support from many sources to get through this very difficult time. I also sent you guys a, a letter earlier today that John and I had sent to all the tenants, just trying to work with everybody on moving forward, you know, through this whole crisis. So I think you all have received it. I mean, that was just my comments I wanted to, to share with you all.
Thank you.
Great. Well, thank you very much. And thank you for being our very first person to do virtual public comments at a Tacoma Park City Council meeting.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. All right, we will move down now to our next person. Let me just see if they are online. Looks like a bunch of folks had to pop off. I think the next person who is still with us, who would like to give public comments, is Mr. David Bloxstein.
Okay, there you go. Thank you. So, hi, I'm David Bloxstein from Ward Three. And first of all, just want to thank the council for, and the city staff for all your great work in this really horrendous time and just how normal the, the city is operating, given this state of abnormality that we're in. So, so really, thank you all for that. I also want to thank you for your work, it seems like years ago, but only a few weeks ago, in passing the amended resolution for the implementation of the climate emergency. And we can all see that it was really important that you, you passed that and were able to move forward at that time. I think it's important just to remember that part of the reason that we're in, in this coronavirus emergency is that people didn't listen to science in a timely fashion. And now we're starting to listen to science, but there's severe consequences. And similarly, if, I mean, I know it's hard to think about climate change and COVID at the same time, but we need to continue to listen to science and to be acting even now to prevent the climate emergency. And, and so I guess the final thing I'll say is that I just want to alert you and the other viewers that on Tuesday, April 7th, there'll be a webinar on climate solutions in Maryland that I'm actually the moderator of. It's going to take place from 5:00 p.m. to 6:30 p.m. You can find information at solliclimatby2030.org, which is part of a national organization that I'm involved in. And the earlier plan was to have this live stream from the council chambers. And I thank you, Mayor Kate, and the staff and the council members who were going to make that possible. Obviously, that's not going to happen. And so, like everybody else, we'll be doing this through Zoom and making it available through the next couple of months with the hashtag #MakeClimateAClass to try to make that available in the virtual world of education. So thank you for your time and for your continued work on both of the catastrophes that are looming in front of us.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Bloxstein. Okay. Next, we have Mary Beth Hastings.
Hi, should I, do I start my own video? Sorry, it's kind of dark. So you can't really, I'm Mary Beth Hastings. And I have never participated in a city council meeting before, so I don't know any different. This seems very normal to me. But I, I really just wanted to add my voice to the, the people who are, who are really thankful for all that you are doing in terms of the city council and city staff. I, it, it just means so much to us to be able to count on, you know, the trash getting picked up every week and, and recycling and that, that we're going to be protected by our, our police department. I think everyone really appreciates that, and maybe not the loudest voices, but, but, but we're out here and we're, we're very, very grateful. I also just wanted to say that, that there is a lot of energy for, you know, there are so many people who are, who are working from home. Some of them are overloaded in terms of what they can do, but there are other people who have some time on their hands. And, and just wanted to, to say that there are people here in this community who, who can be counted on to step up to support our local businesses and can be counted on to step up to support local renters in particular, to help them make sure that they can stay in their homes. So just wanted to, to just emphasize that, that there are people here who, who want to be able to do more and want to be able to make sure that Tacoma Park remains the diverse and, and lively place that it is now with all of our businesses. That's all.
Great. Thank you so much. Thank you for participating. Next, we have Mr. Roger Schlegel.
Oh, hi. I'm Roger Schlegel. I'm at 6512 Allegheny Avenue, Ward Three. And I wanted to thank everyone who's made it possible to hold the public meeting in this format. As you know from a letter I sent, I wanted to comment this evening briefly on the budget situation. And I'm writing on behalf for, speaking on behalf of Community Vision for Tacoma, to request that the city exercise extraordinary restraint in planning and setting the budget for fiscal year '21. It is abundantly clear that the coronavirus epidemic is going to wreak havoc on our federal and state revenue streams and thereby reduce the availability of funds that are transferable to municipalities. And there is a strong possibility, if not a likelihood, that the local housing market will experience more than just a temporary setback, as our personal incomes and savings for many households are being drastically reduced as a result of the current restrictions and of the recession that's now begun. So regardless of how our local property tax assessments are affected, many Tacoma Park property owners are going to face much greater hardship in terms of their ability to pay those property taxes. So under these circumstances, our fiscal year '21 budget should focus strictly on continuation of services and, if necessary, completion of construction projects that are already underway. That's the thinking I wanted to share. Projects that are not currently under construction should be placed on hold. And I know that coming up on April 15th, you're planning a vote, which could result in spending more towards the, is it the design of the library project? And so it, it really might make sense just to hold off on even voting, spend any money on that right now. Capital spending, I think, should be limited to absolutely necessary maintenance and equipment replacement at this point. It makes sense to proceed with any planned initiatives that would result in cost savings for the city in the short term. For example, reducing or eliminating yard waste collection might align with our climate response goals. It also might reduce operating costs to a minor degree. It doesn't seem to make sense to add any new positions at this time unless perhaps those costs would be offset by elimination of other positions. It also seems wise to proceed very cautiously with hiring to fulfill, to fill current vacant positions. If we have staff members who experienced reduced workloads in some way because of this recession, the city manager should be able to shift responsibilities so that the functions of those vacant positions can be handled by other staff members. And I know our staff are working really, really hard, so I don't mean to imply that anybody has free time on their hands. The current emergency restrictions on public gatherings are going to make it very difficult for the council and for us as residents to participate in the normal process of the budget preparation and consideration. Exercising great restraint in this fiscal year '21 process is really going to help maintain public trust during this.
Mr. Stern, you have three minutes.
Is that three minutes?
It's actually over three, but yeah, you're good.
I am so sorry. Okay.
Okay, we have your letter.
You've got the letter. So thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you. Have a nice evening. Next, we have Ms. Denise Jones.
Hi, this is Denise. I am in Ward Five. And I'm, I'm wanting to get on this evening to speak to you about the county guidelines for coronavirus, and in particular, the fact sheet for residential buildings. Because there are two troubling sections for me and other apartment dwellers. One, that the health department will not notify building owners or residents of reports of cases. And two, that property managers and residents do not need to notify the city or others in a building if a person in the building has COVID-19. Now, apartment dwellers have a much higher risk as we live together than single-family home dwellers. Not having notification, and obviously, I'm reading, not having notification of a COVID-19 case in our living communities is putting us at higher risk of transmission, which is already difficult to manage in our public areas. You know, the lobbies, the hallways, the mailroom, the laundry, entryways. And I want to know three things. Can Tacoma Park ask our landlords and property managers to inform our housing office when they, when they are informed or learn of a sick person, someone with, sick with COVID-19? And B, could they compel or at least ask landlords and property managers to inform their tenants so they can make more informed decisions for themselves and their families, especially as regards our seniors and immunocompromised residents about adjustments and how to conduct themselves in the building? It is very frightening to feel as if we're not important enough to inform and we're left to cope on our own in this tight space. These buildings should not be our graves. And don't you want to know about the risk of community transmission in Tacoma Park? Thirdly, or C, why don't we have a coronavirus work group? That's really, I, I'm, I'm very concerned about that. I do want to thank Mayor Kate, because I did speak to her a couple of days ago. And I appreciate you sending me the, the county guidance on residential buildings. I, I do appreciate that. But I'm, I'm very concerned. I live in an apartment building, 12 stories, 135 units at Essex House. And we are, we are very worried. And I know we're not the only ones. There are nearly 1,000 units on Maple Avenue between Philadelphia and the hospital. And we should not be just left to cope on our own. I'm asking if the city cannot step up and, and add to these county requirements so that people have a little bit more information. And that's what I have to say. I will send everybody on the council a, a letter or an email about this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Ms. Jones. Thank you for coming this evening. Those are all the public comments that we have of people in person. I do believe the city clerk also received three public comments that she will pull up and read aloud. And if she's just doing that, I just want to say a shout, a huge shout out to City TV, that that just went so smoothly for our very first time doing it. So thank you very much for queuing up each of the individuals and having that run. And so now I will hand it over to the city clerk to read the other comments, and I will make sure to keep the time as well on these.
Yes, please do. So the first comment is from Robert Anderson on Woodland Avenue. Dear Mayor and Council, I hope this fine- Dear Mayor and Council, I hope this finds you and your families well and thriving. Thank you for your continuing to work on this, on, for city residents during this pandemic. In these unprecedented times, an issue of concern in the city budgeting process that we are currently undertaking. Given what is going on, it would appear that we and all other government entities, including Montgomery County, will have less revenue going forward in the near term than we expected, perhaps much less. Our family was hit last year with a real estate valuation and therefore a concurrent tax increase. However, due to the current pandemic, a number of authorities have projected that home values will decrease during the next, next few years. If this is true, real estate taxes derived from valuations during the state's three-year assessment cycle will yield less than expected, perhaps far less. With businesses on the very shaky, on very shaky ground, we unfortunately may have decreased tax revenue from business taxes and sales taxes, and our revenue stream from the county, a struggle sometimes under the best of circumstances, may well be decreased due to the shortfalls in their revenues. Given the uncertainty of the current situation, I would ask that the council be very frugal as they budget for the next year. That frugality should extend to tabling special projects that were seemingly viable just a month or so ago, library rec center, community center, police expansion, as well as salary increases for staff. It is preferable, in my view, to eliminate salary increases to ensure that we maintain city jobs, not eliminate jobs to ensure salary increases. Additionally, the city's property tax rate must not be increased. Many of our citizens are suffering economically, and adding costs to fund elective projects or positions is simply not in our best interest as a community at this time. I'm sure that you have been considering all of this. I hope that my voice will lend support to difficult decisions that must be made in our uncertain environment. So, that's the first comment. The second comment is from Elizabeth Wallace. It's just a suggestion to parents, when your children who are old enough to go out on their own around the city, remind them that meeting up with friends is possibly not in sync with social distancing, especially as I saw at CBS today, they are not standing six feet apart. Also, I believe that people wearing masks should still stand six feet apart. Not all masks are created nor worn equal, and just because there are hardly any cars on the streets, if you do go out, come to a full stop at the bus, at the stop signs, especially at Holly and Philadelphia. I was almost hit there once again. Be safe. The last comment was really a question, and I'm going to read it only because I didn't get a chance to respond to say that the council doesn't respond to questions during meetings, but Joan Hart wrote to inquire about the status of Washington Adventist Hospital and its use during this emergency crisis. And that's the end of the comments.
Great. Thank you very much to the city clerk, and we can actually, when we get to it, I'm sure the city manager can address Washington Adventist Hospital. I think all of us continue to get multiple questions on that, and we can address that question at that time. All right, seeing, those are all the public comments this evening. We will now move on to our voting session. The first item we have is the Second Reading Ordinance Amending the Tacoma Park Code, Title V, Elections, Chapter 5.04, General Provisions, Chapter 5.08, Wards, Chapter 5.12, Fair Election Practices, Chapter 516, Voting, Chapter 520, App T-Voting, and Chapter 522, Provisional Ballots, and Chapter 5.24, Board of Elections. This is the Second Reading Ordinance. We had a couple of changes that were just cleaned up that members of the public and the city council can see on the cover page. We have been discussing these changes since June of 2019, have had multiple work sessions on this and our voting session last week. Would someone like to move this ordinance? I have Councilmember Kovar moving and Councilwoman Dibala second. Are there any questions or discussions about the ordinance?
I have one.
Councilwoman Kostick and then Councilmember Kovar.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify, I believe the city attorney is on the call. I, first of all, I want to say thank you very much to the city clerk and the Board of Elections and the city attorney for all your work on this. This has definitely been a mammoth project, and it's been ongoing for a while, as the mayor said, and I, I think we're in a good place with a lot of good provisions in the changes that we have before us. What I wanted to very briefly clarify, because it came up as a question, was that the, the changes currently eliminate some language related to donations from associations and corporations, and it's my understanding that the definition of the word "person" includes those, so the prohibitions on donation levels above $1,000 would also apply to associations and corporations. But I've gotten several questions about that because I, I think it is confusing when you, when you look at it and you don't see it there in the text. So, I just wanted to verify that it is accurate that the $1,000 donation limit applies to not just individuals but to corporations, associations, and, and others as well.
That is the intent, yes.
Good. Thank you very much.
Great. Councilmember Kovar.
Thank you, and thanks for all the work, and hello, Mr. Cornbricks. I just had a couple of clarification, clarifying questions I wanted to ask, and this is about the new part that was added. It's 5.10.010 on the registration and campaign finance, and I wasn't as supportive of this when it came up before, so people can take that as they want, but I just wanted to get a couple of clarifications in there, and maybe you can help in that. So, the first question is, and we talked about it, but I, I, I still feel a little bit like I'm not sure about is, what we mean when we say influencing an election, you know, there's obviously a lot of different ways that somebody can influence an election. What kind of activities would actually have to be involved in order for that to be triggered, I guess, is what I'm trying to get a fix on.
Councilmember Kovar, which line are you on? Do you have it in front of you?
Yep. Line of the new version that we got, line 230 and 200, well, 230, yep. It's the part in yellow.
Sure. So...
Page six of the package, of, of the document.
So, as I understand it, there, predating even my time as the city attorney, there's been a discussion about campaigning versus influencing election, and there was an attempt to clarify by using the term influencing election on the part of the Board of Elections. I chose to use that terminology here because I had been present for some of the discussions about campaigning, and I understand that there's a concern that, you know, what if somebody is talking about it on a listserv or something like that? But there has to be a level of discretion in the enforcement of any provision in any piece of legislation, and in this context, you were, we're seeking to address attempts by a candidate or a organization to address the outcome of an election, and I, and that's precisely what that language is designed to indicate. You could always parse it in different ways and use extreme examples on one side or the other, but there has to be some reasonable application and enforcement of it. I can tell you unequivocally that if someone came to me and said, "We want to enforce this in such a way that," you know, we're seeking to cite, you know, Joe Resident for writing something on a listserv or on a social media account, I would advise against it. But, you know, if we have an organization that is, you know, seeking to defeat a candidate or a group of people who have banded together to seek, defeat a, an idea that's on a ballot or something similar to that, then we would have to address it under this provision.
Okay, thank you. And then, just two other points on this same section here on B, which is lines 230, 233 and 234, right after the section we were just talking about, or the, or we were just talking about. It says, "Only a registered person may accept contributions or make expenditures in a local election," and that means someone who is registered according to the provisions we were just talking about. And so, I guess the only question, and if your answer is similar in this, I guess that's the way it would be. You know, sometimes volunteers obviously have to make expenditures, purchase things to set up events at a home, or they might cover the table out front if there's a major fundraising component to these elections, which typically there isn't, and I would just want to make sure that we weren't having this part applied to some more de minimis or casual kind of action of that sort.
I, I cannot imagine that it would be interpreted that way.
Okay. And then on C, it says, "The election laws of the city shall apply to the registered person as if that person is a candidate for office in the city of Tacoma Park." I wasn't quite sure on what that meant because obviously a candidate for election has to do lots of things, including, you know, filing their own expense, expense reports and certain other kinds of ethics disclosures, and I assume, again, we're not talking about that here, but what would that, what would this refer to?
Well, that is actually designed to do, to address campaign finance as it applies to a registered person.
So, how, how would that play out in a, in a specific way?
Well, so, for example, let's say that someone is campaigning or seeking to influence an election prior to the caucus, and they raise funds, and then they, and they raise funds, and then they would still be required to report them even if they are not nominated past the caucus. So, that's, that's the idea, that it brings them into the fold and ties that together.
Okay. All right, well, I would just say, Mayor and my colleagues, I'm supportive, very supportive of the overall, of the overall package of code amendments that I plan to vote for. This part in through here and the questions I was just asking about it, I do think is vaguer than I personally feel is ideal, and I'll leave it.
Are you offering an amendment at this time, Councilmember Kovar?
Well, I voted against it last time. I don't want to slow this down anymore, so I'm just registering my general discomfort with it.
Okay. Any other questions or any amendments people would like to propose at this point? All right, seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to take the, a roll call vote, please.
I'm waiting to be unmute. There we go. Councilmember Kovar.
Aye.
Councilmember Dibala.
Aye.
Councilmember Kostick.
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens. Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Searcy.
Yes.
I heard Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
All right. Mayor Stewart.
Yes.
I think I heard everyone there.
Yes, I heard Councilwoman Searcy too, so I think you got everyone, so.
Okay.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Our next voting item is a resolution approving change to our FY20 Community Grants Program to fund operational support for grantees, and I think on this one, before I ask for it to be moved, we're going to, and we were joined by Ms. Hale, and is Ms. Wiggins still with us?
I'm here. Mayor Stewart, hi.
Awesome. Great. So, I think I'm probably turning it over to both of you, correct?
Yeah, and so, we're going to kick it off with Jennifer Hale, who's our grants coordinator. Jennifer?
Hi, can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Great. Well, thank you, city council members and Mayor Stewart, for allowing me to address you this evening and for your attention to this matter. I am Jennifer Hale, Grants Coordinator for the city of Tacoma Park, and it is my privilege to work with the many charitable organizations that serve our city residents, including the recipients of the Community Quality of Life Grants Program. This program provides greater access and opportunities for participation in the arts and sciences, primarily for individuals with low and moderate income who live in Tacoma Park. In FY20, the city council appropriated $80,000 to support projects developed and facilitated by 11 nonprofit organizations. These organizations executed grant agreements with the city, undertake approved activities between July 1st, 2019, and June 30th, 2020. As we all know, on March 13th, 2020, President Trump issued an emergency determination in response to coronavirus. Maryland Governor Larry Hogan issued a declaration of emergency on March 5th, 2020. The emergency declarations put in place restrictions to limit the spread of the virus. These ongoing health and safety measures will remain in effect for an extended period, and it is therefore unlikely that a return to normal business functions will occur before the conclusion of the FY20 grant cycle. For public health and safety, our grantees suspended most, if not all, of their ongoing grant activities in accordance with national and state orders to limit nonessential activities and gatherings. Like so many other aspects of life now, the COVID-19 health crisis has interrupted the ongoing work related to these public programs. Our existing contracts with the FY20 grantees could not have anticipated these events. This is why we're asking the city council to employ immediate measures to address the impact of this unprecedented health crisis on community grants recipients. By employing these measures, the city will provide critical support to our key nonprofit partners serving Tacoma Park residents. We've notified the city attorney and will work with him on all impacted contracts to ensure that work that can safely be completed is completed. As many other national and regional funders already have, the city of Tacoma Park can commit to distributing any remaining grant funds as general operating support. This conversion of support would only come into effect when a grantee is unable to complete all aspects of the funded project as contracted. Funders across the coun, the country are paying particular attention to communities that are likely to suffer disproportionately during this health emergency because of historic systemic barriers to social and economic equality. The city can make a significant impact in this moment by providing the FY20 grantees the flexibility they need to utilize funds as they are most needed within their, their organizations who serve our community. Thank you very much.
You can't hear me because I'm on mute. Thank you. Thanks for going so smoothly. All right, Ms. Wiggins, do you have anything else to add before we move on?
No, I think Jennifer has really covered it comprehensively, and we've also provided supporting documentation that supports this. This is unprecedented and unanticipated, as Jennifer mentioned, and more importantly, you know, the city of Tacoma Park through this grant program and other grant programs is really a part of the funding world, and this is what our, we're seeing our colleagues within philanthropy doing. So, I don't think we're in any way... So I don't think we're in any way, um, overstepping. In fact, I think we're going to be quite responsive. The, the one thing I will add, um, and then Jennifer is available, and obviously I'm here to answer questions. These are very small nonprofits. Many of the groups that make up the cohort in FY twenty are under hundred thousand dollars in, in operating, um, funds. And so this could be the end for many of these groups if funders like the City of Tacoma Park and other funders don't release some of those dollars so that these organizations can cover, um, unanticipated overhead and other expenses. And we wouldn't want to see that. Um, we have a really strong cohort this year, and we're also thinking about what can be done for next year. Um, and Jennifer, would you mind just, um, chiming in on a little of the work that you've been contemplating for this upcoming cohort? For the twenty-one? For twenty-one, yeah.
Um, well, so one other thing, there's a lot of interesting timing going on with the community grants program because our, uh, FY twenty-one application actually closed on Thursday, uh, March thirteenth. So we, we were still receiving applications before the full weight of what was happening was really understood by the applicants. So we, we have gone back to them and invited everyone to provide additional information about ways that they might be able to pivot and provide services in this new normal.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you. Terrific. Um, do any council members have any questions before I ask for the resolution to be moved? All right, I'm, uh, um, Councilwoman Circe.
Hello, can you hear me? Um, so I have a couple of questions. Um, one, with the original, um, allocation of the funds, did we ever include that overhead costs, um, would be part of the funding? So like, is this now a complete shift? And, and I raised this question, and this might also be a question for the city attorney in terms of whether or not we are, in fact, at risk by not only, um, deviating from the original purpose of the funds that were awarded, um, and not necessarily advertising that. So could someone who was not funded say, well, we didn't know that you guys were just gonna cover overhead costs, right? So I know in some other veins, again, not in the local nonprofit world, but in other contracting, what you're doing is is telling the contractors, you can either pivot, figure out what work you can do remotely or what aspects of program implementation you could do remotely and draw down based on that, or you can wait and we will give you a no-cost extension. So whereas your grant was supposed to be, all the work was supposed to be done by June, now we'll give you until December. Um, you can still draw down the funds, but we're just gonna give you more time because we now understand what's happening and we're just gonna put the paperwork in place to give you an extension. So I guess my question is more about the legality of changing what the purpose of those funds were initially intended to be, um, or to be used for, um, midstream. Completely understand that we are in an unusual space. Um, but I, I want to make sure that we're not, um, overstepping because we, we told some folks no, we gave some people yes, we gave them yes based on the programming that they were planning. And if we are now saying that we are no longer going to require you to do the programming, are we putting ourselves at risk? Does that make sense?
Yes. Um, I think the city attorney, um, was asked this question, so if we want to respond? No, we, we can't hear you.
Okay, there we go.
Right. Now we can, yep.
Uh, yes, thank you. Uh, good question. I, I have been asked that question, uh, by staff. And the, um, the response is essentially based on the information that I have available to me at present. Since the city created the grant, um, it can modify it, provided that the mayor and council determine to do so. Um, we will have to undoubtedly modify the agreements with, um, the, um, entities receiving the funds. But I, I think that your concern is, is on point, but under the circumstances is mitigated by a number of different considerations. Um, does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. So it's helpful to know that we have some flexibility. Um, I also wonder though, um, because I want to make sure that I understand what we're actually proposing because it seems like, um, in some places, it, it, I don't know, I was getting a little confused as to whether or not we were, um, allowing early drawdown of the funds. So are we saying, you still have to do the programming, we'll deal with the no-cost extension, but we'll let you draw down those funds early, right? So it's kind of like, I'm supposed to, you know, do a dance class. I would have needed to pay staff in order to facilitate that dance class. I can't do dance classes right now, but you're gonna allow me to do the early drawdown, um, that will help me to make payroll and do what I need to do because I was gonna have to pay that person anyway to facilitate that class. And then the idea is that you would ultimately still need to do that class. Does that make sense? So are we just saying, hey, all of the money that you have not drawn down to date, we're gonna let you just pull and use however you want, and we're not obligating you to the initial programming that we approved? Or are we saying, hey, we're still obligating you to that initial programming, but we're, we're allowing you to draw down the funds early to cover things now? Does that make sense? It's kind of like, are we still holding them to the programming that they were funded to provide?
I, I would have to defer to staff on that.
Yeah. I, I can weigh in on that if that's helpful.
Yeah, please do.
Okay. So the, uh, important thing to know is that we're already, um, through two rounds of reporting. So I think it's safe to assume, and some of the reporting was due in mid-March. So we have not gone through all of the reporting that has been submitted to us, all the updates. So I'm very confident that we will be able to document the bulk of the work and the bulk of the expenses. What we're asking for is that flexibility around the, if there is a remainder to that amount, to go ahead and be able to pay that out to those organizations because that is the money that they were expecting to get, and that is what we committed them in this year. And through no fault of their own, they're not able to complete that programming.
And so most of the programming is not, because if everyone's like at the end, at the tail end of the grant, and usually when you're at the tail end, it's just cranking out all of these tedious reports about how great your programming was. Deal with a grant, like me, you know what it is. So is, is that just basically because of where we happen to fall in the award year for these grantees? That's where the bulk of them are. We're basically, they're, they're, for the most part, done with their programming. We're not necessarily saying we're paying you for something you haven't done. You've done it. We're just alleviating the burden of the final reporting requirement and paying you out for the completion.
So there will still be, will be reporting, but there's going to be work that cannot be completed for health and safety reasons. We cannot encourage grantees to go through with a lot of the in-person programming that they've been contracted to do. So what we're really talking about is work that cannot be done. If there's a remainder on that grant, instead of creating new requirements or not reducing the requirements that exist to get that reimbursable expense paid back, but we're just gonna go ahead and pay that out to them as general operating support in the hope that it helps get these grantees who do amazing work in our community over this hump as well.
Thank you. That, that was helpful.
Okay. Um, any other questions? Um, Councilman Kostik.
Thank you. Um, I just have a question building on that. I was wondering whether you are still going to require a, um, final report from the grantees and whether you'll get a sense of how those funds were spent, um, and how they were utilized for operational expenses so that, you know, it might be useful to have a sense how, of how those grantees are doing and what additional supports they might be looking at needing in the future, just sort of to get a sense of where they are.
Yeah, absolutely. This, we will continue with our regularly scheduled reporting, which will, the next report is due in, um, in July. And we will absolutely be having the grantees report out on how all these funds were used.
Thank you. Great. Councilmember Smith, did you have a question?
Yeah, uh, thanks for, for this proposal. How soon after, if council does approve this, how soon can you guys get the money out to these awardees? Because I know a lot of organizations, um, they're hurting right now. And this isn't just a Tacoma Park problem. This is, you know, uh, throughout the entire region. And so people need this money immediately. So if this does move forward, and I do support it, how soon can you guys get the money into these organizations' hands?
Well, this is exactly why we're coming before you, uh, so that we can expedite this process. And with council's approval, we'll be able to move this through, uh, finance and payment as quickly as possible. We're still working out some of the kinks of managing this process remote and working with finance to do so, but we're, our intention is to expedite this.
Great. Did I miss anyone else who had a question? Um, Councilman Circe, you had.
Sorry, I have another question. Um, so for, for some of your larger awardees, um, what are, what is the remaining drawdown? Like, how much is left? Because I'm wondering if you have some that haven't, you know, we're in round two and they haven't really done that much. Maybe they were planning to do a lot of programming in the summer, and so they, they really haven't done very much with the money. Um, and then you may have others that are like eighty-five percent of the way through with their programming, and they really are at a point where, you know, it's, it's not, um, necessarily like the city is just cutting a blank check for no services rendered. So I guess my question is, of, of the awardees, how far down have they drawn? And kind of where are they in their respective program implementation?
Right. So that, that drawdown number, because of some of the changes we made to reduce administrative burden on our grantees last year, some of, that drawdown number is almost immaterial right now. Because we, while the, the grantees are required to do narrative reports at intervals, we gave some of them the op, we gave all of them the option to move their financial reconciliation to the end of the fiscal year if it was more convenient for their organization. So some did that and some didn't. So our, our larger organizations that found it more effective to not do the intermittent reporting and financial reconciliations and held that to the end, those, um, haven't drawn down that amount, even though they've already committed funds, they've done both work, and they've spent funds and committed them. That drawdown number, um, is relatively similar to what the grant agreement is. So, but then for some, they're much closer to having already been paid out. So that drawdown number doesn't really reflect where they are in the process of their work because there was that flexibility built in for grantees in this particular contract year. But because most of the, I would say, without having done a full accounting, since we just received our second narrative reports in mid-March, I would say most of them are more than halfway through the work, the scope of work that they were contracted to do with the city.
So, so would it be possible, um, to, because I guess part of my concern too is wanting to make sure, and this might be a question for the city manager, making sure that we're keeping accurate counts, right? So if we have awardees who have already rendered services, right? Um, then, you know, we want to make sure that they could, they're drawing down based on the services rendered. And in my mind, and you all may tell me I'm nuts, but in my mind, I think it makes sense for us to keep, like, if, if the council were to vote to okay to pay out our grantees, it would make sense to me for us to keep a separate accounting of what that COVID nineteen grantee support funding is, just in case we could perhaps recoup some of that later. So, so in my mind, it is, okay, if, if, if we move down this path, we need to keep really clean books to be able to get those awardees to go ahead and draw down based on services rendered to date and keep accu, accurate documentation. And then if the council votes yes, pay them out because we don't know when, if ever, they'll be able to complete the programming, then if we need to recoup those costs, we can. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and what you're describing is a hundred percent our plan of action here. We're gonna go through the normal reporting requirements, and we're gonna go through the normal reconciliation process. If, if and only if there's a remainder and that work cannot be done, that will be converted into GOS and all of that will be documented.
Okay.
And I appreciate, and I appreciate, uh, Councilmember, uh, Circe mentioning that. We're keeping track of every single dollar that could be, um, submitted as, as an expense related to COVID nineteen. And so appreciate you keeping your eyes on that. I will say, our grant staff ha, keep really good track of the funds and the details, so we have the dat, the documentation that will be helpful.
Right. Thank you.
Great. Any other questions? All right. Thank you. I, I think actually Councilwoman Circe asked all my questions and got the answers, so thank you very much. And I will just say, the other hat I wear in my life, um, working, uh, and then having a grant on my own, I, I, I completely agree with Ms. Hale and Ms. Wiggins. This is something that the philanthropic community is doing, uh, I, I've seen across the board foundations, um, in this time. And so I'm glad you brought this to our city council so that we can be supportive of the, um, groups in our community, um, and wholeheartedly support, um, what Councilwoman Circe said about making sure we keep accurate, um, accounting of everything. So with that, I will ask if someone would like to move this resolution. Councilman Kostik moved. I have Councilmember Smith second. Uh, will the clerk please call the, uh, a roll call vote? No, you're still muted for some reason.
Muted, yeah. There we go. Um, Councilmember Kovar? For the vote. Councilmember Kovar?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Dibala?
Yes.
Councilmember Kostik?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens? Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Circe?
Yes.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes. All right. Thank you, Ms. Hale and Ms. Wiggins, very much. I very much appreciate it.
Thank you so much to the council, and this is really going to be incredibly important for these groups. And we will be able to follow up with you at a later time about how this has made a difference. So thank you again.
Great. Thank you. Um, so we only have two more items on our agenda this evening, um, council comments and then city manager comments. Councilmember Siemens, hands up. You're, you're up first.
Am I still on mute?
You are not on mute, sir.
All right, great. No, I just wanted to take a minute to say hello to all the, uh, my friends and neighbors and, and other community members. Um, and just, uh, say that I hope so much that you are doing well at home and, and staying away from other people as much as you can, and just trying to follow the guidelines so we can minimize the, uh, uh, you know, the spread of this virus. I think, uh, you heard, uh, tonight, if you hadn't heard before, that there, there are some cases of this virus and people being ill with this virus here in Tacoma Park. So it's more than just, uh, trying to be cautious. It's, um, it's really trying to help, uh, keep the number of people who get sick down. I, um, wanted, uh, to, uh, just express my condolences, uh, regarding the loss of Pat Lovis, our official peace delegate. It was, um, uh, surprised to hear and, and, uh, I know that we will all miss him. He was a fixture here at the council meetings. For those of you who are at home, I want you to know you're not alone because, uh, each of us, as you'll see here, our backgrounds different than usual because we're all at home. We're all at home, we're all trying to do our part to help get through this crisis. I wanted to really take a minute and thank staff, because they have done an incredible job. As you see with this, getting those technologically up to date so that we can do these council meetings and conduct business. But this is just one little keyhole you're looking at tonight. You know, we've got staff members all across the city who are working from home when they can. But we have the police officers, the public works workers, and so many other city employees that are out there in, you know, risking their health to continue to serve us as a community. And I really want to thank everyone, not just the ones on the street, but the ones who are at home too, because I know this is a stressful time for everyone, and really appreciate your continued work effort. I just take a minute to express my appreciation to a couple of community members who talked about the budget process tonight. I think they raised some important points that we have to consider as we enter this budget season. And I wanted also to mention that my wife Joyce and I have been going out and picking up some dinners at local restaurants. I understand that some of those restaurants now have put in plans for deliveries too. So I'd just like to encourage, you know, everyone to, you know, enjoy the meals like we used to do. It used to be nice to go to the restaurants. But it really helps the businesses and helps to give a little variety in our lives when we're sitting at home, to be able to get food from the local restaurants. So I know that there's information about that on the website, and I'm sure the city manager will be talking about that with her comments tonight. Thank you, everybody. Stay safe and enjoy yourself. That vacation you always dreamed about just didn't come the way you wanted it. And if there are community members who, you know, are being stressed for food, Adventist Community Services is available or on 501 Sligo Avenue. They are still providing supplemental food to help you get through this difficult time. You can call for an appointment at three zero one five eight five six five five six. That was three zero one five eight five six five five six. I thank you and stay safe.
Great, thank you. Who would like to go next? Councilmember Kostick, and then Dibala.
Great, thank you. I want to echo Councilmember Siemens. Thanks to the staff and everyone who has been stepping up over the past couple of weeks. I know it's been a really challenging time, and we heard from a couple of residents tonight, but I've also been hearing from a number of residents who've been emailing and calling me to say thank you to staff for all that they're doing to keep the city going during this really challenging time. And thank you also for making this meeting happen. This is kind of an amazing feat, and I think it's running really, really smoothly. So thank you for doing this. I also want to thank the mayor and my colleagues on the council for all that you're doing, and to the residents today who came out and were guinea pigs for our first virtual comments at our meeting. I think, again, I think it went really well, and I'm really happy to see that we have that. And I think it provides more of a sense of normalcy and a sense of community. And definitely it's nice to see everyone's faces here on the meeting. I just wanted to note a couple of programs that are going on that the city is sponsoring or others in the community are doing that are helping to connect people and make sure that we're still building a sense of community during this tough time. One of those is the Phone a Neighbor program, which I have been volunteering to take part in. And I've really enjoyed the opportunity to connect with a Tacoma Park resident I had not met before. And I know there are others who are doing that as well. I want to encourage everyone to volunteer for that program and sign up if you are interested in receiving phone calls. It's just a nice way to check in with a neighbor, have someone else to talk to if you're at home all alone, and just kind of a way to change up your day a little bit. I also have seen a lot of people chalking their walk, using sidewalk chalk to decorate their front walk or making signs to put outside of their front door to say hello to neighbors and raise spirits. And it's been really great to see that. So if anyone is interested in doing that and doesn't have access to sidewalk chalk, I have some extra that I was given to help distribute. So I would be happy to give that to anyone who is interested. Neighborhoods are also doing some really great things. Our neighborhood here has a plan to go out tomorrow while trash pickup is happening. And holler thank you from our front porches to the public works employees who are keeping our city clean during this difficult time. And I know there are a lot of initiatives where people are going out and saying hello to each other at a certain time in the evening or going out and singing. And it's just really great to see people creating these opportunities to continue to build community. I also want to let everyone know that I will be having a virtual office hours tomorrow at eight PM via WebEx. So I encourage people to call in. It will be from about eight o'clock to nine o'clock at night on WebEx. And you can also call in by telephone. I've been having some trouble getting the telephone number to work when I have done some tests. So if people are planning on attending and are able to use their computer, I would strongly urge you to do that. But I did choose an evening time in hopes that there would be less traffic on the call-in number. But of course, if you want to contact me and have a conversation about something, you are more than welcome to contact me at any time outside of that as well. And that's it. Thank you all. It's great to see everyone.
Great, thank you very much. Councilmember Dibala?
Yes, thank you. It's great to see everybody. It's so reassuring to see everybody's face, and the public comment went well. I'm very pleased that the staff was able to get that together. So just a couple of things. It does seem like we're in for a marathon and not a sprint here as we get used to the new normal. I have just been totally impressed with the city staff and with the folks who are outside every day doing their jobs. And I want to pass on not just my thanks, but also all the residents that have stopped me in the street or have, from a safe distance, or have emailed me or called me and let me know that they really appreciate it. And I just want the city manager to pass that on. I'm also really impressed with and excited with how folks are stepping up in the neighborhood and building community. There's a whole bunch of city stuff that's just started happening. But in the neighborhoods, as Casey said, a lot of really exciting things are going on. I want to shout out one particular, just as an example, as an inspiration. I heard that on Woodland Avenue, a group of neighbors managed to pack bag lunches for Shepherd's Table and deliver them, and do it from a safe distance from each other and in a fashion that would allow the food to be used when it got where it was going. And they're going to do it again next week, so just as an inspiration to everybody else. And if anyone wants details on how that worked out, I can put you all together. And I would like to ask for help in finding the folks who need the help the most. We all know there's people hidden, tucked away, hidden in this community that we don't normally interact with. And I've noticed that more and more residents are coming to me and saying, hey, what about that person on the corner? What about that person a couple blocks from here? That's the kind of thing that would really help right now, because there are city services available and county services for people who need it, if we can make contact with them in a safe way. So thank you very much. That's what I have for tonight.
Hey, who would like to go next? Councilmember Searsi and then Kovar.
Hello. So I just want to say and echo all of my colleague sentiments in saying thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you to all of the residents who are advocating on behalf of not just their families, but other families. We've had a number of residents who reached out to county parks to make them aware of usage of county playgrounds and how there's concerns about safety of the children that are in those spaces. We've had residents who have, while they're walking their dogs, picked up litter along the way and is working to try to keep our streets as clean as they can, given the current circumstances. I want to thank all of the residents who are even doing things like, in Wildwood, there's a list of like extras or supplies that people have. And so if someone posts on the list, they're, hey, does anyone have Tylenol? Check the list. Yes, I have Tylenol. Leave it on your porch. Those are some things that in a time where supplies might be limited, just knowing that you can rely on your neighbors to come through and provide is just such a reassuring thing. I also want to give a huge shout out to staff. I know that you all, that others have said this, but our staff, like, you don't understand. Many of us who telework regularly, we already have the computers and the systems in place and the do's and the don'ts and the VPNs all set up. And WebEx, Zoom, every single type of teleconference and chats and jabs already set up. But our city staff made that transition while responding to COVID. And that's just huge for people who are familiar with how much effort it takes just to make the transition, let alone to make the transition during a pandemic. And without skipping a beat, services are still going out. Many grant programs are being thought of and implemented in a week. Like, this is just unheard of, but it's the typical run of show for the city of Tacoma Park. So I am in awe of our staff and the stuff that they're doing and the speed in which they're doing it. So I just want to, again, thank you. The, had an opportunity, I know we didn't have a council meeting last week, but a couple of weeks ago, had an opportunity to participate in a number of Zoom conference call meetings with residents in the Tacoma overlook. And I don't know if I mentioned this when we last met. But one thing that I loved about those meetings, I want to thank all of the organizers. But that was an example of how, in a multifamily building, residents who are familiar with public health and how to mitigate things, figured out a way to bring their residents together to start talking about some things that they could do to help mitigate the risk of COVID-19 transmission within their building and in their common spaces. I know that Denise Jones mentioned what are some things that can be done. And I'm happy to connect residents in Essex House, maybe with some of the public health folks that live in the overlook, and they may be able to offer some suggestions on ways to maybe facilitate a listening session to try to make sure that you're kind of bringing everyone along for the ride, helping everyone understand about resources, and also helping everyone to understand about what responsibilities property management, as well as individuals will have, and helping to kind of mitigate transmission. Because I agree with the comments earlier today. It's a lot trickier when you're in a multifamily building to try to figure out a way to get everyone to the table so that everyone understands that everyone plays a role, because there are so many common. Lastly, I want to talk a little bit about, I know a number of residents in Ward Six have brought up concerns about encampments in the park near Hillwood Manor and also between Becca Lily and Carroll Avenue and just along the creek. We have, and I've been working with Grace, Grace has reached out to local nonprofits to try to get a little bit more canvassing done to ensure that individuals that may be in the creek area are not homeless and whether or not we can provide some alternatives to camping in the woods. But we also have notified the county police chief, McSwain, to make him aware of the need to do additional canvassing. Part of it could be, you know, we've dealt with homelessness issues and seeing remnants of that in the park. Some of it could also be, given that we are under stay-at-home orders, some people who don't want to stay at home, they choose to hang out in the woods. So trying to make sure that in either case, everyone in the city of Tacoma Park is safe. So we have reached out. I just want to make sure that everyone knows that we have reached out, and we will continue to do so. And I'll definitely work with the city of Tacoma Park Police Chief to make sure that we're in constant communication with the county police to increase patrols along the trails. So with that, again, I just want to thank everyone. This meeting went great. Other than the fact that my dog decided to disconnect my internet. That's why I was late. Between that and wanting to play with the squeaky toy in the middle of the meeting, you know, but he's asleep now on the floor, so I guess he's tired now. So, but again, thank you all for your patience as I joined late, and thank you all for this great meeting.
Thank you. Councilmember Kovar? No, you're right. No, start again.
Am I on now?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate all my colleagues participating in this and the great work by the staff to set this up and the group of people who did come out to speak tonight. And hopefully in the future, we'll be able to have more. I think the staff are doing an unbelievable job, as others of my colleagues have already said. And I think the fact that we had several people who spoke in the public comment period tonight really starting or even focusing all of their comments just on the fact that the staff are keeping things going during this extraordinary period, I think it's just a good tribute to the work that they're doing. And I'm sure that will continue, but they do all need to hear our appreciation as often as we can, so I do want to say that. I hope everybody will abide by the rules. My wife and I have been out walking, and one of the activities is still allowed. And we've had a lot of great conversations with people at a distance. And it's a good way to get out and see things, and you don't feel completely cut off. I do agree with what Denise Jones said in the sense that if we can find better ways of addressing the challenges in multifamily buildings, and I've heard about that from people here in Ward One as well. We have Victory Tower in particular, as people know. If we can find a way to address some of those concerns consistent with the privacy needs and requirements that apply, I think it's worth doing. And I know the mayor and staff have been in touch with county folks about that. Not sure what the answer is, but I think it's something we should continue looking at, especially if it does become a situation in which we end up having a lot of cases here, which of course, we hope we won't. The one other thing we might want to keep our eye on, just as far as the response to the virus goes, is, you know, it's not that easy to get food. And we tried to order from two different places for delivery, grocery stores, and they weren't able to do it. So I'm getting it from somewhere else, and it's fine. But I just am a little bit worried about if people might either have to wait three, four days or some of the places they're trying to get it from just can't do it, whether that's going to be an issue that will come up going forward. As far as interesting things that residents are doing, I'll just mention one. A group of young people, I think they're middle school and possibly in that range, maybe even younger, have put together a little newsletter that they did themselves and they sent it around. It's the first issue only so far. They say they're going to be doing more. If anyone's interested, I could send it, but actually, it's pretty well done. So you can raise your hand if you want. And then a couple of things that are unrelated to the virus, I just wanted to mention. One, I'm really glad we passed the election code changes. I think we might have to still keep our eye on whether, depending on how long this lasts. And we should understand what would be the date by which we would have to take action if we needed to on a vote-by-mail approach. My hope is that things will be back to normal before we get to that. But it'll be helpful if the staff or maybe the Board of Elections could tell us if we were going to do that. We need to know by this date and be ready to do it. Two other things on the budget. I appreciated Roger Schlegel's comments and several other people, and I had gotten a copy of that letter earlier. It's a hard one to know how to answer right now, because we do want to maintain all the services that we're providing. all the services that we're providing and on things like the library, which don't actually come out of the regular budget since all the sources of funding are separate from that, uh, i- it's hard to know how that would work. I think the most important thing for us to do is whatever happens with the budget, because I think the city manager put together most of it before it really became apparent how s- how severe the pandemic was going to be. I think the most important thing for us in the budget will be to have, uh, multiple, uh, checks during the course of the fiscal year when we can make adjustments. And of course, we always have the ability to do that, but I think it'll be really important, especially in the first six months or so, to be able to take a, a second or third look at and say, okay, how are we managing? Do we have to potentially put off certain projects that we were thinking about, et cetera? So I, I think having that flexibility somehow built into it will be really important. And the last thing I want to mention, which is unrelated to any of those things, um, and this gets to, uh, this relates to trees and of course, my colleagues know that we're doing, uh, we're working steadily toward having, um, both, uh, a comprehensive rewrite of many parts anyway of the tree ordinance and also, um, a resolution on our, uh, tree canopy goals and our overall urban forest policies. Um, one thing that's come up just recently in North Tacoma, and this is connected to the Montgomery College, uh, construction project over there, during the course of the charrettes and the other, uh, reviews we had of, of the Mass Science Building that's going to be built there, and they started with the, the, uh, demolishing process of the existing building there now. My recollection and talking to other, um, residents who were part of that, I don't recall there being much in the way of significant tree loss. They have come forward now and filed a permit with the city and it was originally to cut down 66 trees. Seven were, um, waived either because they were too small or dead, but so they're proposing to cut down 59 trees and the replacement level would be over a hundred and or $29,000. And the challenging part about this is that under the law, it's kind of no different than if I just said, I'm doing an addition in my house and I want to cut down two trees in my backyard, the same 15-day period for, um, posting and review. And then if someone appeals, and I think someone's going to appeal, and it goes to the tree commission, not a hundred percent clear how the tree commission will, uh, be able to work well in the current pandemic environment. I did talk briefly to, our brief rate about that, um, earlier, uh, today. But as part of the tree ordinance work that we're doing, and I haven't figured this out yet because this only just came up, but, um, I think we probably will also want to look at, um, a, a language that would say in some fashion that for really significant commercial, um, oriented tree, uh, removal requests, that maybe there's some sort of additional, um, hurdles that would be involved, including, um, media, public posting, not just on the site, but, uh, online and community meeting and things of that. And the other challenging part about this one is that because it's around the construction site, that's fenced off and so people don't even really have the ability to, to go look at that. So I think there's two things we need to do. I'm, I'm going to be reaching out to the cause, but we need to understand more about what their current proposal is and if it's true, which seems to be the case, that the law is the law and they're treated no differently than anybody else, we certainly want to, um, look at changing the, the law going forward to address situations like this, because I think most people would agree that cutting down 59 trees in one area probably doesn't seem the same as just cutting down one or two. So more to come on all of that. Thank you.
Great. Um, did I miss any one else's comments this evening? All right. Um, I think I made most of my comments, um, earlier, um, this evening. I think there's just, um, one thing I, I did want to mention and thank Ms. Jones for coming, um, tonight. Um, right before the meeting, I did pose a number of questions to, um, the, um, the folks at the county, um, we will look at that, um, and see their responses to a number of the questions and, um, work with our staff in the city who has already been working with, um, a number of the multifamily buildings, um, to, uh, look at ways that we can, um, move forward on this issue. Um, in addition, I did want to also raise for folks, um, I actually had the opportunity to talk to the county executive this evening and two of the things that, um, he, uh, wanted to make sure that I was aware of and that residents are aware of in the city is that under, um, the federal legislation that was passed, um, and looking at the state of Maryland, um, if you are, uh, an independent contractor, a sole practitioner, you can actually file for unemployment benefits. Um, go to the, um, state website and receive this information, um, but we really need to make sure, especially in a community like Tacoma Park. We actually have, uh, quite a number of residents, um, who are sole practitioners, they work, you know, they're, um, gig, um, workers and other things, um, and so many times, um, they think because they don't pay unemployment insurance, they don't, they can't qualify for benefits. Given the legislation that was just passed, um, they can qualify and all the information is on the state website. So just trying to push that, that information as much as possible. Um, so now I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Okay, Aman? You hear me now? Okay, great.
Yeah.
Thanks, everybody. And this, this meeting did go really well. I'm, that's a, a nice thing to see. It does feel a little bit normal. Um, so I'll answer, uh, one question that was raised during the, um, public comment period was about Washington Adventist Hospital, Adventist Healthcare, Montgomery County, uh, the state of Maryland have been looking at all the various, um, opportunities for more beds during what's anticipated to be a surge in the next couple of months. And, uh, we don't know exactly what, how the Washington Adventist Hospital facility will be used. Um, the, but they're looking at it. It's moving. I think, well, I know there's a commitment to try to get a lot more beds, whether or not they are actually used for COVID-19 patients or some other purpose, um, is yet to be determined. City staff has been working with, um, a number of the, um, folks at Adventist Healthcare, particularly to line up staff, help with staffing, because they're going to need more, um, staffing if they open the building. So today is the 19th day of the state of Maryland's, um, health emergency and so, and that's the time when we switch to working remotely. Um, I appreciate the comments by council. We, we really moved, uh, in, in getting, uh, the transition to working at a distance. And, um, I have to shout out my IT staff, uh, City TV, Jesse Carpenter, people have been, uh, putting in long hours to, to make this work. Um, it's particularly difficult when it's items that have, um, you know, check processing and payroll and a variety of things that just don't, you don't normally do at home, uh, getting those things done, and I appreciate everybody pulling together. I think the biggest issue for Tacoma Park, uh, residents is that the worst of the pandemic is yet to come. That's very scary. Um, I know people are concerned about being notified if somebody in their building may, uh, have COVID-19, uh, or on their street. You should assume that most people have it, treat people as if they have it. Um, a lot of people who are sick don't have symptoms, um, and, um, and we just have to practice the, the social isolation, uh, the six feet of distance, um, being friendly, waving, uh, but recognize you need to keep that distance. Have to stay calm. Um, I think we can, um, you know, be caring to each other while we go through this. And I appreciate that we've got the Together TKPK kind of hashtag logo out there and we want people to really feel that. As people have mentioned, um, we're continuing to provide public safety, public works, most other city services, um, and, um, we have the, our city main city number, 301, um, 891 7100, uh, during, um, office hours are asked, answered, um, by a real person if people need help. Our website is, um, really good. The COVID-19 information and resources page has substantial more information today than it did yesterday. Uh, it does include the information on unemployment insurance that, uh, the mayor just mentioned and includes a lot of details about many of our various programs, either within the city or the county or the state. Um, so some of the things that we've been doing as staff, um, the discussion has, has had a lot of discussion about how do we help residential, residents in multifamily buildings? Um, on the website is the, uh, frequently asked questions document that a resident mentioned. It is helpful. Um, it also has a lot of links in it, um, for additional information. Our staff has been talking with residents, building managers, property owners. We're trying to do more of that, um, different kinds of conference calls, virtual meetings, um, materials in different languages and then answering individual questions. It's April 1st, so people are saying, what do I do about my rent? Can I get evicted? Evictions are postponed, um, and we certainly, um, encourage a lot of, uh, conversation about rent, um, and people need to keep track of their expenses. Um, we're also working with, uh, the condominium communities because, um, even though they're owners of the buildings, the HOA funds go to their building maintenance costs and so that's, uh, something that they're concerned about. Um, we also have our regular housing issues, you know, people have complaints about the facilities and their, uh, the condition of their apartment or, or whatever, is also something that our staff continues to work with and they've been phenomenal, um, to do what's normally our in-person job, uh, virtually has been really, uh, hard work and they've done an excellent job. Other place that we're, we're rocking it has to do with, um, economic development, uh, small business assistance, workforce development. On our website and in my city manager comments, which get posted and sent out in the Tacoma Insider, we've got links to the citywide small business mini-grant program. We already have 69 small businesses who have indicated they need help. Um, we have our first round of, uh, review of those applications on Friday. Uh, we'll keep doing it on a rolling basis. We need donations from residents. We have some city money, we'll look for other city money. Um, but it does indicate how significant, uh, the need is and, you know, some of those folks may be able to take advantage of what's in the unemployment insurance information as well. Uh, so we're trying to connect them with the grants that the county has, the state has and, and other things as well as, as our mini-grant program. There is an online donation, um, setup, a system setup for, if you want to donate to the, to the small business mini-grant program. We're trying to promote Eat Local and, uh, the Tacoma Park To Go, um, little webpage lists our various, uh, restaurants that either, um, have takeout or delivery. And I looked at it today and there were some that I hadn't been to in a while, so I need to, I need to diversify my eating, uh, to eat local. There are employers who are hiring people, especially delivery and some of these other essential businesses are looking for people. WorkSource Montgomery, um, has current job opportunities listed, links to that are on our website. Um, they also have, um, some virtual conferences, webinars, um, that can help. The next main one that looked interesting is how to do a virtual interview. So you can't come in person to interview, how do you practice and, and do a good job getting those jobs? Um, we're doing our regular business with, with trying to prepare for the recreation center, uh, community engagement process. Um, we are also, and that also involves, um, community engagement in virtual, uh, ways. We're helping our Old Tacoma Business Association, CDA, as well as, um, businesses in areas that aren't represented, uh, by a business association. And, and you know, a lot of those folks haven't been linked to us very much. Uh, they operated on their own because they were doing okay and now they, now they need us. And so it's a, it's nice to really, uh, get to know them again. Um, as has been mentioned by some of the council members, we have the, um, emergency assistance grants. Um, these, we have a process for that and, uh, we, we can be a little bit more generous sometimes, um, when we have specific, uh, financial problems, uh, come up, um, by a resident, please look into that if you need it. For our regular work, Public Works is really busy. Um, besides picking up trash and that kind of thing, they're putting out the signs, uh, they made signs in a variety of languages to talk about our facilities being closed. Um, they're doing lots of deep cleaning work, um, and pretty soon they're going to be doing the regular stuff, the sidewalk construction, stormwater construction work. You know, I was asked for a list of those and I don't have them, uh, the locations, uh, in front of me right now, but I will get that out to council. Um, they're doing the, they do permits, they're doing the, uh, tree bulk buy program, they're going to be planting trees and the Flower Avenue project is continuing. And frankly, it's one of those really exciting things, the sidewalks going in. I've been waiting for this sidewalk for so many years and it looks good and, you know, so at least I feel like checking off a box, we're getting the sidewalk though on Flower Avenue where it's been so unsafe for so long. Um, we've, um, been kudos to our communications IT and the clerk's office and, um, the number of hours they have put in is really remarkable. Um, so I, I need to find a way to give them a little bit of a break. Um, I think it, it's just the nature of, um, the commitment of the staff to wanting to get the work done and to do it right, and I really appreciate it. A couple of people have, uh, talked about the budget and what is the budget going to look like in a pandemic? Um, I have a, um, kind of my thoughts on that in the main story for the newsletter, which will be coming out this week. Um, you know, despite the pandemic, we have to have a budget on July 1 and that's a, um, we did have a lot of the numbers before the pandemic hit this area. We've also gone through and made adjustments and we have the ways to look at it, kind of what, what we feel is important to keep, what we might be able to look at where we have different numbers coming in. We're looking at ways that we can get reimbursements from the federal and state and, and county options. Um, so all of that will be before you over the next, uh, few weeks. In my presentation on Monday night, I hope that, um, between what's in the newsletter and what I present, um, people will see kind of the things that are really, uh, sound and those things that we're still trying to work out as a, in a collaborative way with the council, um, as we learn more information through this process. Um, I have to say, I, this is one of the few times when I'm glad we don't have a diversified economy, uh, the communities that really are reliant on, um, hotel motel amusements and those kinds of things, uh, some of the larger municipalities in, in, um, this area in Montgomery and Prince George's County really are being hit. We don't have those kinds of funds coming in, um, which were immediately hit. We have funds that may be hit in the future and we have to look at that really carefully. Um, while we're, while we're on kind of this working in remotely, um, thing, we do have some fun stuff going on. The library, the recreation and the arts programming staff have been doing really cool stuff online. Um, and you know, I, I'm too old to go to circle time or watch, listen to children's books, but I miss it, I have to say. You know, there's, uh, at some point I'll be a grandma and I'll get that, get that again, but the, but it's really been fun to watch. Um, you know, I'm trying to do something and I, I'm listening to, uh, one of the stories by Ms. Katie and, and you just, uh, do get thrilled. And then the arts programming, the concerts that they're, that they have online really are very nice. Um, so all that, uh, information's also on our resources page. And I also finally want to note, um, planning and community development work is ongoing and they have a lot of long-term projects. This is a great time for them to do this work, um, and they can do a lot of that at home. Um, and so they're heavily involved in that, but we're also pulling them in when we need help and they're doing a lot of help with some of our communications work and, um, helping with some of the budget review process. I do want to highlight that, um, just before the, the pandemic hit in this area, planner Jamie Ernst was in, uh, Germany and was able to get back to the United States, which was good. Um, she was in this very special program. It was called the Post Carbon Cities of Tomorrow Program. It facilitated professional exchange on topics related to the post-carbon economy and it, it brought together 17 young professionals in urban planning, sustainability and waste management from across the United States to Germany. And Jamie was, uh, one of the chosen few to go to this program. Uh, the program discussed German sustainability initiatives from a variety of perspectives and then, um, while they talked about what that needs in Germany, it was helpful for some of the folks from the United States to talk about equity because that's been a part of sustainability, um, interests in, in the U.S. And so she's brought back some, uh, good information and when I have time to listen to it, I will be really thrilled to, uh, see some of the presentation. I've heard from- I've heard from others that it's very interesting. I wanted to also just mention, Councilwoman Serse mentioned homeless populations. I know that the county is looking at ways to address the homeless population so that they are safe. And I don't know all the different steps, but I think they're looking at some additional locations to help homeless individuals in our community. So I appreciated that, you know, we'll be in that loop. But the county does have to take some extra steps because of the significance of the COVID-19. I think that covers the items I was going to cover. Yes, Cindy? I think she has to get unmuted. Ms. Tavala? Oh, I know.
There we go. Two things. One is you mentioned library programs and public art. I know there's a public art list serve. What about the library programs? How do people hear about them?
You know, the best way, frankly, for the library programs is if you follow the library on Facebook. That's where most of their links have been. But we're also trying to give some links to that on our website. So we'll work on getting that a little bit better.
Thank you. And then I stepped out for a second, so I might have missed if you commented on the emergency actions you've taken in the last couple of weeks.
No, I had that on a sheet of paper, and I forgot. But I'm glad you nudged me on that. One of the things that happened on, I guess it was the meeting of March 5th. I get a little bit lost on where we, seems like a long time ago, that allowed the city manager to have some authority to take actions because we're in an emergency, and then to report back on those actions that I've taken. I have taken four actions since that time, and I have reported them to the city council. But I will go ahead and share those four actions with the public, so you have a sense. On March 13th, which was the date that many of the emergency declarations took effect, I changed work schedules and work locations of staff without providing the advance notice that's normally required from our collective bargaining agreements. And that was for everybody's safety. On March 26th, I authorized an essential Public Works employee to use a take-home car to go to and from work because he'd been relying on ride-on bus, and that was just not working, given the reductions in ride-on bus service. And on March 27th, I authorized a hazard pay amount as a bonus, hourly bonus for certain staff, mostly police officers, who are likely to come into physical contact with members of the public at this time. And the fourth action that I've taken is I administratively approved the purchase of the replacement garage doors for Public Works, which needs to move forward. And all of those things are items that are clearly within that emergency authority and have been shared with the council. I don't see a lot of emergency activities needing to take place in the future, but I will continue to share information with the council if something comes up. One thing that I've really appreciated during this time, while we've been working remotely, is daily discussions that go share information between the council and myself, as well as daily conference call with my staff. And so I'm trying not to surprise anybody, even though we're working at these disparate locations. And it just feels like a good team, trying to make sure that we're doing the right thing in a really tough time. Anything else?
Great. Well, thank you very much. And I just want to note, and I kept meaning to mention it earlier, that today is the city manager's fifth anniversary as being the city manager in the city of Tacoma Park. And I just wanted to say thank you for all the work that you are doing. You have been with the city for many years, as city manager for the last five. And it truly says, I cannot imagine needing to weather this crisis with anyone else running our city. And you are doing it without a deputy at the moment. And the fact of like how smoothly this meeting ran and the comments that all of my colleagues said on the city council and that I'm receiving for residents is really a testament to your leadership in the city and really leading off staff during this time. So I just want to extend my thanks and happy anniversary. And I'm glad that we were able to finish our meeting before 10:30 at night. So hopefully, you can have such a little bit of downtime before having to get back to budget preparation. So with that, we'll just all say thank you. And we'll end our meeting this evening. We will be back again on Monday night for a presentation of the budget. So thank you again, everyone, for a terrific meeting. And stay safe, and we'll see you soon. Thank you. We are adjourned.